Thousands of children across the country don't have access to dental care, including right here in Southern Nevada. Future Smiles is a local nonprofit that serves the dental needs of underserved students in the Clark County School District. We stopped by the Women's Philanthropy Dental Wellness Center on the campus of Elaine Wynn Elementary School to learn more about Future Smiles and the services they provide.
Future Smiles was founded in 2009 by three dental hygienists, myself and two of my dental hygiene colleagues. We had a dream of increasing access to dental care here in Southern Nevada. The facility is available for any Clark County School District child.
They said that he needed help, so then I said, "Okay," and that's how I found out. Hi! They gave me some paperwork, and then they told me to come over here, then I made an appointment. He had some caps on his teeth that he had because he had two cavities. And so they fixed his cavities and then put in the caps. And right now, they're going to put the mouth care because he's missing some teeth, so we want it to come out straight.
The dental care that is provided here at the Dental Wellness Center is very much like what you experience at a dental office. You will get digital x-rays. You will see a licensed dentist here in the state of Nevada, Dr. Erica Nieto. And she provides wonderful, comprehensive dental care. So the children will have fillings, they'll have cleanings, they'll have any minor extractions that they may need, so that we can get them on a pathway.
It's so important, ages zero to 100. It's connected to your entire body. I feel like in the past, maybe it's been overlooked as not as important, but it really disconnects from your head to your toes.
Future Smiles is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We balance out our care with Medicaid children, as well as private philanthropy foundations like Elaine P. Wynn Family Foundation and the Ingolstadt Foundation. We have many, many foundations and funders that help support our mission. What we see is that 50% of our children have a Medicaid resource. However, the other 50% are low-income and uninsured. I have a couple of points to make. First and foremost, parents need to sign their children up for Medicaid. If they're eligible, they should sign up for Medicaid because it opens the door to all health care products, whether it's medical, dental, vision, mental health, and all the things that a child needs to be healthy and well to do well in school. The second thing I'd like to say is oral health care matters throughout the lifespan. So kids need to brush and floss twice a day, eat healthy food, have good nutrition.
It's really rewarding. The population, I would say, it's really rewarding. The families are very appreciative.
Oh, it means a lot because I know how it is to have bad teeth. As you know, a smile is that makes a smile in every day to everybody.
Thank you for all that you do for our students. And listen to this, Future Smiles also serves schools through a mobile unit that can provide onsite care for students in need. You can learn more at futuresmiles.net. At one local elementary school, it's reading week every week, all thanks to the school's wonderful namesake. Check it out.
Hi, boys and girls!
Hello, Mrs. Givens!
Every Friday without fail, and with her lollipops and special cards in hand.
I am special. I was chosen to go to Story and Snack with Mrs. Givens.
Mrs. Givens.
Remember, nice straight line.
visits her school for Story and Snack.
Get a card and a sucker.
A tradition dating back to 2004, when Linda Rankin Givens Elementary School, home of the Grizzlies, first opened its doors.
I run into students that went to school here 10 years ago, or 15 years ago, whatever, and they always ask me, "Are you still reading on Fridays for Story and Snack?" And I'm so happy that I can say, "Yes, I'm still there."
One of those former students.
And they all get so excited how they hold them up and show mom and dad.
Isabella Welch, who's now a campus security monitor and cheer coach at Givens Elementary.
Ms. Givens, when I went here, was like a celebrity. Going to Story and Snack, I always remember that it was a huge treat. Everybody was so excited.
She's really nice. I liked reading books with her in kindergarten and first grade. And she's my favorite teacher.
There's no doubt Mrs. Givens was the favorite teacher of many of her students throughout her teaching career with CCSD.
Boys and girls, when I taught school, which Mrs. Givens taught here in Las Vegas for 30 years. I taught kindergarten, first, and second grades. When I taught, I always gave my boys and girls hugs because I think it made them feel like I really cared for them, which I did.
I like that she's kind, and she reads stories.
That kind and caring nature.
Don't worry, Doug likes you.
has made a positive impact on the lives of so many students. And she's even inspired some of these students to follow in her footsteps.
And I hope a lot of them would become teachers. I think that would be exciting.
My eventual goal of working here now is to eventually move into teaching here. That's something that I would love to do, and I'm currently getting my degree to do that.
I love to get hugs. So when you leave today, I want you to give me a hug or a high five, okay?
I like hugs.
I like to hug her. I did hugs.
And we read somebody doesn't like hugs. We like hugs. Okay, high five.
I'm so happy to say I'm a hugger too. Big thank you to Mrs. Givens. It was truly wonderful to witness firsthand just how much your students love and admire you. You are definitely a celebrity. Tens of thousands of children across the country don't have access to dental care, including right here in Southern Nevada. Future Smiles is a local nonprofit that serves the dental needs of underserved students in the Clark County School District. We stopped by the Women's Philanthropy Dental Wellness Center on the campus of Elaine Wynn Elementary School to learn more about Future Smiles and the services they provide.
Future Smiles was founded in 2009 by three dental hygienists, myself and two of my dental hygiene colleagues. We had a dream of increasing access to dental care here in Southern Nevada. The facility is available for any Clark County School District child.
They said that he needed help, so then I said, "Okay," and that's how I found out. Hi! They gave me some paperwork, and then they told me to come over here, then I made an appointment. He had some caps on his teeth that he had because he had two cavities. And so they fixed his cavities and then put in the caps. And right now, they're going to put the mouth care because he's missing some teeth, so we want it to come out straight.
The dental care that is provided here at the Dental Wellness Center is very much like what you experience at a dental office. You will get digital x-rays. You will see a licensed dentist here in the state of Nevada, Dr. Erica Nieto. And she provides wonderful, comprehensive dental care. So the children will have fillings, they'll have cleanings, they'll have any minor extractions that they may need, so that we can get them on a pathway.
It's so important, ages zero to 100. It's connected to your entire body. I feel like in the past, maybe it's been overlooked as not as important, but it really disconnects from your head to your toes.
Future Smiles is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We balance out our care with Medicaid children, as well as private philanthropy foundations like Elaine P. Wynn Family Foundation and the Ingolstadt Foundation. We have many, many foundations and funders that help support our mission. What we see is that 50% of our children have a Medicaid resource. However, the other 50% are low-income and uninsured. I have a couple of points to make. First and foremost, parents need to sign their children up for Medicaid. If they're eligible, they should sign up for Medicaid because it opens the door to all health care products, whether it's medical, dental, vision, mental health, and all the things that a child needs to be healthy and well to do well in school. The second thing I'd like to say is oral health care matters throughout the lifespan. So kids need to brush and floss twice a day, eat healthy food, have good nutrition.
It's really rewarding. The population, I would say, it's really rewarding. The families are very appreciative.
Oh, it means a lot because I know how it is to have bad teeth. As you know, a smile is that makes a smile in every day to everybody.
Thank you for all that you do for our students. And listen to this, Future Smiles also serves schools through a mobile unit that can provide onsite care for students in need. You can learn more at futuresmiles.net. At one local elementary school, it's reading week every week, all thanks to the school's wonderful namesake. Check it out.
Hi, boys and girls!
Hello, Mrs. Givens!
Every Friday without fail, and with her lollipops and special cards in hand.
I am special. I was chosen to go to Story and Snack with Mrs. Givens.
Mrs. Givens.
Remember, nice straight line.
visits her school for Story and Snack.
Get a card and a sucker.
A tradition dating back to 2004, when Linda Rankin Givens Elementary School, home of the Grizzlies, first opened its doors.
I run into students that went to school here 10 years ago, or 15 years ago, whatever, and they always ask me, "Are you still reading on Fridays for Story and Snack?" And I'm so happy that I can say, "Yes, I'm still there."
One of those former students.
And they all get so excited how they hold them up and show mom and dad.
Isabella Welch, who's now a campus security monitor and cheer coach at Givens Elementary.
Ms. Givens, when I went here, was like a celebrity. Going to Story and Snack, I always remember that it was a huge treat. Everybody was so excited.
She's really nice. I liked reading books with her in kindergarten and first grade. And she's my favorite teacher.
There's no doubt Mrs. Givens was the favorite teacher of many of her students throughout her teaching career with CCSD.
Boys and girls, when I taught school, which Mrs. Givens taught here in Las Vegas for 30 years. I taught kindergarten, first, and second grades. When I taught, I always gave my boys and girls hugs because I think it made them feel like I really cared for them, which I did.
I like that she's kind, and she reads stories.
That kind and caring nature.
Don't worry, Doug likes you.
has made a positive impact on the lives of so many students. And she's even inspired some of these students to follow in her footsteps.
And I hope a lot of them would become teachers. I think that would be exciting.
My eventual goal of working here now is to eventually move into teaching here. That's something that I would love to do, and I'm currently getting my degree to do that.
I love to get hugs. So when you leave today, I want you to give me a hug or a high five, okay?
I like hugs.
I like to hug her. I did hugs.
And we read somebody doesn't like hugs. We like hugs. Okay, high five.
I'm so happy to say I'm a hugger too. Big thank you to Mrs. Givens. It was truly wonderful to witness firsthand just how much your students love and admire you. You are definitely a celebrity.
We will start the board meeting. I would like to welcome everyone today. I'll be chairing. Some of our colleagues are not available today. So we'll call this regular board meeting of February 27, 2025, to order. And the time is 5:00 p.m. I would like to remind everyone to please silence your electronic devices at this time. And we acknowledge that the land on which we gather is the territorial homelands of the Nuwu, the Moappa Band of Paiutes, and the Las Vegas Band of Paiutes. So for our opening items, we'll have our flag salute. The pledge of allegiance will be led by trustee Barone. The presentation of colors will be led by Clark High School ROTC. Let me see. Okay, Cadet Seaman Tomax Lino. Cadet Seaman recruit Serrano. Cadet Lieutenant Junior Grade Luna Pedro. And Cadet Chief... Cadet Chief Chun. And instructor, United States Marine Corps Master Gunnery Sergeant Douglas L. Webster, retired.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Before our open item 1.02, is there anyone who did not get a chance to complete public speaker cards? If not, please do so. If not, please do so now. Do we have anyone? And just a reminder for public speakers to please state your name for the record. We have one person, Ms. Anna Binder, for comment for 1.02.
Thanks. I've never had to do that. Thank you. Madam President, members of the Board, interim superintendent Larson Mitchell. This is not a hill I want to die on, but I want to make the record clear that tonight, for the first time in all the years that I've been enjoying this space, we have never had the president and vice president missing a meeting at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. If there are no other public comments, may I have a motion by... May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam President, I have discussion.
Yes.
Or not Madam President, sorry, trustee Henry.
Yes, go ahead, please, trustee Dominguez.
I just wanted to make a message that the vice president and president are not here, and their role is to lead and facilitate discussion, and that they need to be here to fulfill their responsibilities. They took the... They self-nominated or took the nomination for this position, and so they need to uphold their place in this position. And I would like to move to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you for clarity.
That's a motion? Then you would be looking for a second to that motion?
Is there a second for that motion?
Seeing no second, then the motion fails. And then you would ask if there are any other motions?
All right, seeing no second, that motion fails. Is there any other motions, please?
Madam President, members of the Board, I would like to make a motion to adopt the agenda with the following changes. Revised reference material has been provided for item 4.04, Notice of Intent, Clark County School District Regulation 5129. And the revised reference material has been provided for item 8.05, Licensed Personnel Separations.
Thank you for that motion. Trustee Stevenson, is there a second?
Trustee Henry, I would like to second that motion.
Thank you, trustee Cavazos. And all those in favor, please catch a vote. That motion carries. Before I open the consent agenda, is there anyone who did not get a chance to complete a public speaker card? And if not, can you please do so now? And if not, can you please do so now? We do have two that have signed up. Can I please have Ms. Chris June Cluliani, please?
I don't know if it's... I'm sorry, Chris. Hold on one second. So this is the consent agenda, which you will be voting on for the entire consent agenda. So the steps are discussion, public comment, and then action.
I can wait.
My apologies. Can you please... I will definitely call you back up. Thank you. Thank you for the clarity. Do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Thank you, trustee Henry. I recognize we're living in, like, dog years right now, and so I know things are going very fast, and we've had a lot of long meetings, so I don't intend to make this a longer meeting. However, due to significant concerns from the community regarding Lundie Elementary School, I think transparency is critical, and I believe it is important to ensure the public is fully aware of what is happening. Unfortunately, there is no other place for me on the agenda for me to bring this issue forward besides here on the dais on this consent agenda. So I'd like to motion to pull consent agenda item 2.13, Contract Award Storm Damage for Lundie Elementary School.
Thank you, trustee Dominguez. Is there a second?
I second that motion.
Thank you, trustee Satori. Please cast your vote. That motion carries.
So trustee Henry, at this point, you would have that item removed. You can either do that item first, or you can do the remaining parts of the consent agenda. There'll be just two items.
Thank you. Can we have discussion on 2.13?
Trustee Henry, did you want to move for the other consent for the rest of the agenda? Or do we want to do one?
We'll do this one first. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Are we gonna... Okay, well, there are some items that I had discussion on. I don't know if staff wants to come up, but... So there are items regarding the insurance that I would like to discuss as far as having clarity for the community on what happened with the insurance. I know from last session, there was some questions regarding the claims and where the claims went, and how much we do have insurance, how much insurance is covering. I know staff is getting ready here. But I did watch... I did go back to December 4, the work session meeting, to re-watch that session. And then I went back to August 27 to watch that work session. And then I went back into, I think it was June. There is a lot that has happened with this community, and I think a lot of transparency is needed for our community. So if you could briefly describe to us what was received and where we are now, where we are today with the insurance?
Madam Chair, members of the board, interim superintendent Larson Mitchell, for the record, Kimberly Kremlin, I'm the Director of Risk Management. The insurance claim value was 1.5 million, of which the insurance company deducted the district's $500,000 deductible. The district also had $250,000 in emergency response reimbursement, which were activities necessary to respond to the immediate emergency, which has left approximately $750,000 from the insurance company's payment. As the Board of School Trustees voted to repair Lundie Elementary School in December of 2024, risk management immediately notified the insurance carrier of the decision. Repair estimates are being reviewed by the carrier to determine what, if any, additional coverage is available per the property insurance policy. The $750,000 and any additional coverage that's available per the property insurance policy will be reverted to the capital improvement funds.
Thank you. And so I do want to remind my colleagues back in... Let me make sure I have this right. This is the Bond Oversight Committee in June 20, 2024. On the agenda item 2.06, Reference A, there was a lot of damage done to Lundie. There was significant damage in the soil, and so there was some... And if my colleagues want to see this, this was some emergency soiling had to occur to protect the rest of the building structures, if I'm correct. So that's where that emergency funding source went. Is that correct?
Members of the board, interim superintendent Dr. Larson Mitchell, Kimberly for the record. Yes, we have to respond as soon as we are aware of the emergency and try and mitigate any future damage as soon as possible.
Thank you. And I don't think we're doing the whole thing anymore. And so from my understanding, there was a $500 deductible, but CCSD received $1 million, but I guess the payout was 1.5, and the deductible was taken out from that. Is that correct?
That is correct. The value was 1.5 million, and then they reduce it by our deductible of $500,000.
Thank you. So currently, where is the 750?
Risk management has a property damage claim budget. Anytime we are handling a property damage claim, the monies associated with any of those repairs and any money received from the insurance company are funneled through that fund. It doesn't impact the school budget. It's simply placed aside for that property claim.
Thank you. And then is the... Did we miss any deadlines from the insurance during this time, due to the insurity of the board and the future of Lundie at the time?
We typically have two years to make a decision on what we're going to do. Our property carrier has a very good relationship with us, and because we were very transparent and kept them in the loop, they're not having an issue with it.
Thank you.
Because we reported right away.
Thank you. And in regards to the rest of Lundie, what portion of it is damage and what is replacement from what was there before or needed to be upgraded?
Madam President, members of the board, interim superintendent Larson Mitchell, Brandon McLaughlin for the record. I'm saying that merely because it's my first time speaking at this, so I know we've altered it. It's tough to extrapolate it exactly, because if it's a conduit, but it was related to storm damage, but it happened to also be damaged, I'd be hesitant to stipulate a percentage or monetary value, aside from what our insurance carrier articulated in their assessment of it.
From my understanding, the statutory reserve funds are there to use if we have something that is not needed to be repaired more as an upgrade or replaced to make sure our schools are up to standard. Would that be correct as far as having... The $7.5 million, I'm concerned that we're taking that from the capital improvement fund. And so I want to make sure that if there is something that is not just damage from the flood that is needed to be upgraded, that we're also utilizing the statutory reserve funds?
Great question, trustee Dominguez. Sorry. Yes, the excess statutory reserve fund funds what we anecdotally call capital renewal. So it's things that you wouldn't want to go get large loans for or bonds for, but it's things we know have an expected lifespan within our facilities. And so we tend to target carpet, playgrounds, asphalt paving, and some of our technology suites, our interactive flat panels, things like that, that have a medium shelf life is what we target within those. So yes, within what's in this couple of work, there is asphalt paving, there is carpeting or resilient flooring, and there is... We're exploring whether a playground could be included within that, because it has a life expectancy. It's just about there. So we're exploring that. But certainly, we don't tend to fund our major projects like this in a multi-budgeted account or fashion, but some we've explored.
Thank you. I think it would be a good suggestion to explore it, because I know we don't do this normally for all schools. However, this school was in need of repair before the storm, and so there are maybe minor upgrades that we're doing to the school now that shouldn't take away from the capital improvement funds. And so moving on to that, I wanted to talk about the kiln room. I know that's been something that I've heard a lot from the community discussing. I've researched on the kiln room. I have not been able to find any NRS, any Clark County City Ordinance discussing the kiln room. The only policy that I could find related to the kiln room was a CCSD policy from 2015. That policy came with an art room storage. So if you have an art room, you need storage to store your chemicals, similar to like a science room, you need a room to store your chemicals. Is the kiln room necessary to rebuild this school, to make it whole again, if it wasn't utilized as a kiln room, as an art storage previously?
I would like to recognize superintendent Brenda Larson Mitchell.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the board, for the record, Brenda Larson Mitchell, our chief academic officer. Dr. Mansell will share about the Nevada Academic Content Standards and the required curriculum. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair. Trustee Dominguez, Dustin Mansell, chief academic officer for the record. There are kindergarten through grade five standards in the Nevada Academic Content Standard that address ceramics and 3D art. So kindergarten, first, second, third, and fourth grade students within our pacing guides and our curriculum guides for art teachers do include ceramics and 3D art in all five grade levels, kindergarten through grade five. That does require the use of clay. And clay, when we are producing work within our pacing guides, does require the use of a kiln for firing, glazing, and refiring for student production of that work.
Do all elementary schools have kiln rooms?
Brandon McLaughlin, for the record. I'd be hesitant to, without verifying it at all, but certainly our educational specifications for all modern era elementary schools that we've been constructing recently, and will continue to construct to include a kiln.
From my understanding, did the school have that clay pottery curriculum in the classroom in Lundie?
Trustee Dominguez, Dustin Mansell, again. The standards with kindergarten through grade five visual arts have not been updated from the state pre the pandemic. So yes, clay has been around. I have been an elementary educator, I would say, my entire time outside of this position. But I was a principal of an elementary school for five years, an assistant principal of an elementary school, and a teacher for 14 years at the elementary school. Yes, clay and pottery and 3D visual arts have been part of the curriculum since my time in the district since 2001.
Thank you. And I'm not against clay here. I do enjoy a good art craft from my kids. But what I'm getting at is making sure we're doing the best with our taxpayer funds that we're receiving and making sure that we're not taking away money from other schools and making sure that we rebuild Lundie to make it whole again. So that is my intent and not against clay. So my question is, how much is the kiln room portion costing?
Brandon McLaughlin, for the record. Just in some research the last couple of days, because I was curious, that specific piece of equipment retails at about $4,200. The enclosure for it, that's not broken out as the current lump sum proposal in front of you guys.
So is the kiln room, it's not... It's a foundation, so they're pouring in concrete, they're building walls. Is that correct?
Brandon McLaughlin, for the record. It's actually a prefabricated unit, so there is foundations in those typical or customary construction methods, but maybe not as intensive as a full brick and mortar would have it be. It's a little bit more expedient and a little less costly.
Got it. Thank you, colleagues, for your patience on this. I truly appreciate it. I'm going to let trustee Satori, if she... I know she had some concerns.
Thank you. And thank you, trustee Dominguez, for pulling it from consent in the briefing. We had had some questions and got a lot of great information on the Lundie update. So we just felt it was really important for that transparency to be able to share with the community. So thank you to the staff for entertaining our discussion and making sure that, like I said, we're transparent with our community. Trustee Dominguez did address most of the topics I was looking at, but let me take a look real quick here at what I still had left. So to clarify on the insurance, I know you had said it in what you were stating, but that we would be submitting for increased funds from the insurance once we have a more itemized or accurate scope of the work. Is that correct?
That is correct. They will go through the entire scope of work to identify everything.
And it would be the possibility that there could be additional insurance funds at that point, at which point would go in that risk management bucket?
Yes, they would issue a supplemental payment, and then we would reimburse capital fund.
Okay. And also, can you just clarify as well that that standard procedure, that the insurance money does not go into the school budget, it goes into that bucket for all of those types of...
Yes, that is correct. Risk management always reimburses the department that actually expends the money. So in this case, with a building, it would be facilities. So we would just reimburse them and refund the money back to them that we get from the insurance company.
Okay. Can you speak to as well when the survey will be going out and how we'll be utilizing that to gauge interest in the pre-K program?
Good evening. Lindsay Tomlinson, Region One Superintendent, for the record. Trustee Satori, yes. So I have been engaging over the last couple of weeks trying to gain any additional students and information that I need to be providing out to the community. I've made some phone calls. I spoke to two last evening. I spoke to one additional this morning to get their emails, which I'm so happy they reached out to me. A survey will be going out on Monday that will go out to every member that I'm aware of. There is going to be probably a few that I'm not. And I did ask anybody that I've spoken to, which is quite a few actually, to share that with the community. And that will go out Monday. We will gather that data for about two weeks. At the end of that, we will utilize that data to decide next steps for future programs. And then we will be using it to help ensure that we help every family enroll when the time comes in April for enrollment. So we'll be working with each of them individually, as well as setting up Google Meet so that that works for their schedules.
And there was also a discussion of reaching out maybe to Ernie about getting a more exhaustive email list as well, correct?
That is correct. We'll be working on that as well. And we're happy to have the community share that, once the surveys go out on Monday, to anybody that maybe we have missed.
Would on the kiln room, I understand that it is part of the standards, would the school have the option to say, we're able to address those standards without the use of a kiln? Or would it not be, just out of curiosity of possibilities, and apply that money elsewhere?
Trustee Satori, oh, great question. I've done a lot of research around clay. And I had a great conversation with our coordinator of art, elementary art. And what I've discovered through the three models of clay that are typically used in CCSD, fire clay is the most prevalently used clay. It is the one that is used through the kiln. And the final product then can be used through the firing, glazing, and firing. It closes the pores, allows students to use their little cups or bowls for actually cups and bowls. The other type of clay is model clay, which is very much like Play-Doh. It is a soft clay oil-based. It does not create the final product for students to turn in for grading. It's really to practice molding. And then the other one is a company called Sculpey Clay. Sculpey Clay does not require the kiln, however, it is an air-dry clay that is soft after finish. It does not create final products. If students were to take them home because there is no firing or glazing, it remains porous, which means students should not be using that clay for any sort of water drinking, eating cereal. So it's not a safe final product type of clay to be used. So really, if we are going to be following and offering the same sort of art curriculum for the students at Lundie that everyone else would receive, they would really need the fire clay and the kiln opportunity.
Thank you. I believe that's all my questions, so thank you.
Thank you so much, trustee Cavassos.
Thank you, trustee Henry. And thank you, staff, for being here to answer our questions and your patience. And this is a question I believe I brought up in a briefing, so just for the...
And this is a question I believe I brought up in a briefing, so just for the public's kind of edification here. We have, I believe, an agenda item, I believe it's 1.2 million that's set aside for unanticipated expenses. Is that correct, Mr. McLaughlin? I don't want to quote an incorrect figure.
Trustee Cavazos, Brandon McLaughlin, for the record. Yes, there's about 1.3 million in known unknowns, things we know we're going to encounter and weren't able to properly scope. And there's also set asides for unknown unknowns, all trying to target that August 1st target for opening. So in lieu of bringing back excessive change orders, we did identify those items and carried them as allowances and contingencies.
Okay. Thank you. So if it should come to pass that, that the amount that's needed to address those concerns, 1.2 million is not enough, those then would come back to the board as change orders, is that correct, to be able to approve the needed amount?
Brandon McLaughlin, for the record. District policy would stipulate that we have some discretion within, I believe it's 5% on modernization work. So if we exceed that 5%, we would certainly bring it back in alignment with the regulation. Prior to that, we would not have to, but in the effort of transparency, we can. But I think the 1.3 million that is already included in this is well sufficient. And it's helpful to articulate that of that 1.3 million that's being set aside for allowances and contingencies, it's specifically that. It's only there if used and does not actually get transmitted to the general contractor. We would still retain that and we'd be able to utilize it, but it still remains a district if it's unused.
Thank you so much. That was all I had, trustee Henry.
Thank you, trustee Dominguez.
Thank you, trustee Henry. I, I wanted to go back to if we could break down the majority of the cost here, and I know it's, it's really hard because it, it is compact. Is it, is it the asphalt? Is it, what is the majority of the cost of, that we're expecting here?
Trustee Dominguez, again, I'd be hesitant to articulate what the breakout is exactly. A part of the customary process for any construction project is after award, there's something called a schedule of values identified. That becomes the criteria for how contractors bill every month. So it's your billing against line items at that point, because they'll attribute certain scopes of work to that line item. Once we award contract and receive that schedule of values, we'd be happy to share that. So you could potentially see what that breakout is more closely articulated to.
And I'm just trying to get to, because looking through all of the amazing binders that I received and documents and inspections, there was, there was significant damage with the asphalt. Obviously, it was, it was fixed in an emergency situation. But there were cracks and other items. And I know we mentioned upgrades to alarm systems and communication systems. And so I just want to make sure that we are utilizing the taxpayers' money correctly. So, and we're going and putting it back to where it was. So I'm just trying to make sure, I'm just trying to get an idea for how or what is the majority of the expense. And I recognize there's labor costs and material costs. So I'm just trying to understand where that, where those materials, where those labor costs are going.
Again, if, Brandon McLaughlin, for the record, if I had it, I would share it with you, but the way design-build is structured in statute, it's a lump sum agreement, and they're not required to. Martin Harris is a great partner. Like I said, we will follow up and try to articulate those costs to provide you guys that in follow-up, but at least to date, that has not been identified.
Thank you. And then you mentioned the kiln room again, and I get, I don't mean to harp on the kiln room again, but is, so is the, the cost for the, the clay burner 4,200, is that what was the cost? Or is it, what is the room cost for the, the entire room, not just for the pottery or the storage portion?
Yeah, Brandon McLaughlin, to clarify, the, the model or the, the template piece of equipment that we furnish most middle schools and elementarys with is a, a piece of $4,200 retail price equipment. The amount of the enclosure, again, we don't have an articulated scope of that, but I'm certain that it's probably a specified division, construction specification is to division on that line item breakdown we're going to see. So I'm happy to provide that in follow-up.
Thank you. And then did we have communication with the county regarding the waterway pathways so we don't have more damage coming if there's rain or any kind of snow happening in the future?
Great question. We've had preliminary discussions with them. They know there's improvements upstream of it. I don't know, I don't want to speak on their behalf, but I, I don't know of any projects to remediate some of those things upstream. All I know is what we're going to expect on our site. So we will properly mitigate the storm flow to our site and off of our site, properly and in compliance with what our insurer is requiring us to, to properly insure the building.
Thank you. And then this question is for Ms. Tomlinson. If, if community members are, are watching and listening, where can, where should we direct them? Should we direct them to the Board of Trustees? Should I put your number out on Facebook? Where, where should I direct people?
Trustee Dominguez, absolutely send them my way. You don't need, I can talk with the parents. I'm happy to help them, support them. They can either call the Region One office, 799-0648, or you can just send them my email. Please feel free to do that, and I'll follow up and a phone call with them.
Beautiful, thank you. And just one more clarification, that was for insurance for Ms. Kremlin. When we, as, as we go through this process, what are the steps are we taking to file for the insurance so we make sure that if there is something that we can get covered, we continue to have that communication with insurance?
Trustee Dominguez, right now, what we're doing is we've provided them the lump sum costs. They have gone through it. They are working, they will work directly with Martin Harris on any questions that they have. They will get clarification, and we will sit down as a group to understand exactly what the work is so that they can determine if it's covered or if it's something that's excluded.
Thank you. Trustee Henry, I have, I would like to listen to public comment, if that's okay, and then we can be ready for a motion?
Yes, that is totally fine. So thank you so much. You was trying to adjourn the meeting, you sure had a lot to say. All right. Yes, thank you so much. Would like to hear from a public comment. We have Chris June Kuliani, thank you so much. Please join us.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair. Madam President, sorry, Superintendent, members, fellow trustees, Chris June Kuliani, for the record. First of all, thank you so much, again, from the community. They have town board tonight, so Brenda Tally can't be here, she's on the board. A lot of the parents are there because they have a zoning item that they're dealing with. So I, I asked them to email and at least let you know what was going. And to trustee Dominguez and trustee Satori, they still thank you so much for what you've done in a few short months. The frustration, and I forgot, that backup does not come other than the one pager because of the design-build is what you're saying. And so it was very difficult to know what to ask questions about, so thank you. Because the kiln was an issue, because it was donated by my neighbor up there, Alan, over 20 years ago, and it was not used in the last five years, according to the faculty that we spoke with. And then I talked to other artists, I called school principals, and I said, okay, do you have a kiln? The older ones do not. It has only started to go in in your modernized, modernized buildings, as far as from what I understand. There's new product out there, as, as was mentioned by this gentleman, that does dry up quicker, and the kids can still do their painting and do and whatnot. But as long as you still have your opportunity to see what that cost is going to be, then I think it's comfortable to take a look at that. In the insurance, originally, they did reimburse you for $50,143.50 for the kiln room, tilt-up walls, and, and structural part. So hopefully, that gives you some guidance on what that cost may come down to. We do appreciate also that pre-K will be considered. At last year, when we gave the last list to Ms. Tomlinson, we had eight. Two new families, just, a new family, Katie told me today, moved in with two kids. I don't know what their ages are. I just want to make sure that you're reaching out to not only those that chose to homeschool their kids, but anybody that had been originally enrolled, because those are folks that might still be floating around out there. We do, there is a floor, another classroom on that site. There's three classrooms actually in that facility, so it could accommodate pre-K. And that's a building, that's probably not pertinent to this part, but that is your jurisdiction to deal with as you want to maybe change the grade levels and, and ease up on that part of it as a public policy matter. The septic tank, and maybe Brandon can, it's also, only says addressing the septic system and leach field in the backup information. And I don't know if that means replacing it, repairing it, and so forth. Addressing it means, oh, I told, I talked to you about it. I don't know what that means. So I'm hoping that, once again, that the septic tank is at least a 5,000 gallon tank. I found one for $1,800 at Lowe's, because you don't need a concrete one up there anymore. They actually recommend that you do a fiberglass model for, for places where you have snow and, and ebb and flow. Ethos is the one who did the study that you reimbursed out of the insurance money for that $250,000 for the Martin Harris, I believe, if I go back to the notes. So that, that sounds like it's, you deducted that from the original insurance, so there's money still there. So again, I apologize.
Thank you so much. Next, we'll have Anna Binder.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, interim Superintendent Larson Mitchell. I signed up just in case Chris couldn't cover all of her topics in the three minutes. But I've raised six kids in this district across four different elementary schools in the last 22 years. And the only pottery that I have to show for it is one, I guess you could use it as an ashtray, because it isn't, it's the molded clay, right? So I actually use it as a ring holder in my bathroom. So when I wash my hands, you know, it's there. But I just would encourage the input from the community that if this is a financial strain or burden on getting Lundie open, and it's causing any problems, that the community has to say whether they actually want it instead of it being forced upon them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Binder. Next, we have Abraham Camayo.
Hello, Abraham Camayo, for the record. Unfortunately, as a bond oversight committee member, we have not been able to have our meetings since November. Our last meeting was in November. We haven't had a meeting since December, January, or February. So we, as a board, have not discussed Lundie and all the great questions that Ms. Dominguez is asking. Also, when I went and toured Lundie Elementary School, many things were, were new, were, were present, like the electrical panel. It's still new, it still has the plastic on it. So I'm pretty curious to see exactly what's the scope of work? What's the receipt that we're going to be paying out to Martin Harris? I don't want to slow down the progress or construction that Brandon's team and the school district's team might already been having. But August is fast approaching, and the great thing is, there's not that much snow at the mountain, so should have shovels on the ground already. But also, Christie is correct, the septic tank, it's not that expensive. So I'm very curious to see exactly how much and what are we spending the money on adequately to be fiscal and financially responsible. The community has spoken more than once that they don't want to spend $7 million to reopen the school. They want the school open. And according to the engineering plans, the school could have been open a long time ago. It's all in the reports, it's all in the, in the paperwork. Electrical upgrades, there's, there's electricity, I understand some, some, some things can be changed, but what is the scope of the electrical work? What is going to be done? That's, that's the biggest question. So just wanted to inform you that we have not been able to have these discussions as a bond oversight committee. And my chair is aware that I was going to be speaking about it today. And so we look forward to having these discussions so that we will continue to move the ball forward and, and, and continue to get this, to get this going. Superintendent Brenda Mitchell Larson, you weren't here last time, but really quick, I want to give you an update on the kids from the football team, on Silvestri. I want to tell you personally, they won a championship, and they took first place, and because they were able to play the, the game on the field. So thank you so much for helping, talking to the principal and getting the team back on, on the field to play. So thank you so much. I just wanted to tell you in person. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Camayo. We don't have anyone else? May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
You're actually, yeah, you're actually the motion for Lundie itself, the contract for the Lundie.
My apologies. Trustee Dominguez?
Thank you, trustee Henry. If I could have our, Mr. McLaughlin, clarify the septic tank. And I also wanted to remind my colleagues that we do, I don't want to delay Lundie. I don't want to delay the opening of Lundie. I'm just simply trying to ask questions. And also, we're kind of bound by the previous board's decision. So there was a motion in December 4th at the work session, item 2.03, it was reconsideration for Lundie Elementary School, and it included the design-build process, which fast-tracked. So we are kind of bound with the design-build process. So I'll go ahead and open it for Mr. McLaughlin, if you can kind of tell us about the septic tank and if there's some cheaper options at Lowe's?
Just a, just a point of order, if you are engaging in discussion again, then you will be going back into public comment. So normally, it's discussion, public comment, action. You're free to engage in more discussion if your board entertains that. You, you just have to accept public comment again after any period of discussion.
I see. Hopefully, my colleagues agree with me, and they would like more information on the septic tank issues. Shall we proceed?
Please proceed.
Thank you, trustee Dominguez. On the septic tank, I know there has been requests for upsizing it for any potential futures. We are including a modest growth in it because these things are more logarithmic. You could increase, increase the size of it to 5,000 gallons is the, the size mentioned. That's, it's way overkill for what even doubling, tripling the building could be. So we did include modest growth of the system, but it's not to 5,000 gallon. But as far as what the clarification, what the scope is, we do have to relocate the leach field and septic tanks, or we're leaving, rather, the septic tank, rebuilding the leach field, interconnecting it underground so that it can be fully functional in the end. And that puts some of the existing leach fields and the new leach fields together, back on the service side of the building, a bit more aligned.
Thank you for, thank you for that clarity. With that, colleagues, I'd like to motion, I'd like to put up a motion for approval of 2.13 contract award storm damage for Lundie Elementary excluding the kiln room. Oh, I'm sorry.
You can, you can make a motion before action, you'll have to take public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I jumped again and again.
You can do it either now and then take public comment, or you can wait until public comments.
Okay, let's make the motion now. I would like to make the motion for 2.13 contract award storm damage Lundie Elementary School to exclude the kiln room portion of the building.
Is there a second?
You were able to second, just no action until public comment.
Because it's different now with the kiln room, does that impact?
So the motion is not, there's a specific motion to approve the contract with the exclusion of the kiln room. You're looking for a second. If there is a second, then you'll go into public comment. And then after that, if there's no further discussion, then you would go into vote for that motion. If it passes, so be it. If it doesn't pass, then you're going to entertain a different motion.
Thank you so much for clarity. Trustee Satori?
If I have a further question, then can I ask that now before I second then?
Yes, if you have a question in regard to the motion, then you can ask a question whether you want to second that motion.
My question is how that would impact timeline and if that was, if the kiln room was removed from that.
Brandon McLaughlin, for the record, I'm hesitant to speak because are we able to respond without having to engage public comment again?
Yes.
Okay, all right, good. I don't foresee it impacting, and we'll just merely preclude it from the scope if approved by the board. We'll just exclude that scope and move forward with everything else.
Okay.
And then that monetary value, we just seek line items of that and recover that as, as not being charged to the project.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Is there anyone that wants to give public comment? Thank you, Ms. Binder.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, interim Superintendent Larson Mitchell. This is not directed personally at anyone, but you guys have gotten a lot of legal advice since the giggles, but nobody asked counsel about your own governance policy. since the giggles, but nobody asked counsel about your own governance policies and the way that this meeting's being ran without your leaders. Like, the way I read the policy, there's exceptions for a lot of things, but not for both your president and your vice president being missing.
Thank you so much.
Chris June Kiliani, thank you very much for whatever you consider, but we appreciate this. The kiln room was not a hill to die for, but it's fiscally not responsible if it's not being used. And so that's part of what our community was trying to argue for. So thank you for listening to that part of it. If and when we ever turn Lundie into a pre-K-12, then you can put that into the building that's built for that part of it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else? Seeing no one, we have a motion on the floor and a second. Can we please vote? That motion carries. Next, if we can have, can I have a motion to approve our consent agenda? And thank you all so much for the presentation.
You always have to have, yeah, public comment before you vote.
Thank you. Is there anyone for public comment on the remaining consent agenda items? Thank you. May I have Mr. Abraham Camayo for 2.12 and 2.08?
Hello, Abraham Camayo, for the record. Let me see, 2.10. All right. Just talking about the budget and the awarded contracts that you guys are going to be approving, I just want to just point out a couple of them. As a dad, as a coach, we want to give the best equipment and tools to the students to progress. But I also was noticing that, for example, Durango High School, there's an awarded contract for almost $1 million for gym equipment for the weight room. I can actually go to Big Five Sporting Goods and purchase everything that they need for less than $200,000 and some more. So we are over, we're overspending on things that we don't need. And like I said, yes, it's good to give the students, athletes, all the dumbbells and weights and everything to get bigger, better, and stronger. But at the same time, sometimes we need to start saying no to what we're purchasing as a school board. We're mismanaging our funds. Today, I got to tell my daughters no to hot wings and some other things they wanted from McDonald's because I told them I have bills to pay because the month is ending. We can't continue to award these contracts at the expense of our budget, and we need to start using it accordingly for our teachers, facilities, maintenance. We're overbuying part of the contracts you'll see, you're also going to see of a purchase for almost another $1 million for computers, for HP computers. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there's like 30,000 laptops, Chromebooks in the warehouse at the school district, just sitting there. That's going to, they're going to probably need program upgrades pretty soon, but they're brand new. They're still in the Chrome box, not open, that we got during the pandemic. So why are we spending money on new computers? Once again, my kids go to school, we need the computers, but why are we misspending money on things we already have? We should look at what we have in our warehouses and maybe put it up on Nellis Auction and get some money back. But we're, and we're also spending $100,000 on air conditioner parts for the buses and stuff, which I agree, we need, we need these things. But are we, when we purchase these buses from Bluebird, are we getting allocated funds for repair, for maintenance? Is that being part of it? Because we're spending a lot of money, and this money adds up very, very quick. And this is where everybody in the community starts saying, do we need to start doing a, you know, a forensic audit and so forth? So we're, well, that's just what I want to say. We need to really start looking at where we're spending and how we're spending and who's approving all these things because at the end of the day, it affects our children. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, we have no one else for consent agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please? Thank you, trustee Barone.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to approve as it remains.
Thank you, trustee Barone. Is there a second?
Thank you, trustee Henry. I have a point of information for staff. Possibly, we could be a little more descriptive in the contract awards so that way the public and trustees can know what these, what the awards are going towards, just as a public, just as a point of information. And I will second the motion.
Thank you, trustee Dominguez. Can we please cast our votes? That motion passes. Next, the ratified warrants is listed in the bills payable, transmittal, and board memorandum number 13-24-25 in the total amount of $375,600,608,219.38. And I do thank you all for your patience and grace. I will now open agenda item 3.01, the Board of School Trustees Office of the Superintendent and Attendance Zone Advisory Committee. And before I open the item, is there anyone who did not get a chance to complete a public speaker card? If not, please do so now. We're ready for your presentation.
Trustee Henry, if I may, Madam President, members of the Board, for the record, Brenda Larson-Mitchell. Just before we hear the school zoning recommendations for the upcoming school year, I just want to acknowledge we have several members of the Attendance Zone Advisory Commission in the audience, and we are just very, very grateful for their time and their commitment in working alongside with us. Yes, and if they could please stand so they could be recognized, that'd be greatly appreciated. Thank you. Many, many hours. And now I'll turn it over to Mr. McLaughlin and Ms. Murphy. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Larson-Mitchell. Madam President, members of the Board, interim superintendent Larson-Mitchell, Brenda McLaughlin, Assistant Superintendent for our Construction Development Division, which also includes not just construction, our Demographics, Zoning, and Geographic Information Systems. We're excited to be presenting the recommendations of the Attendance Zone Advisory Commission, otherwise known as AZAC, for the 2024-2025 season. As many of the trustees may be unfamiliar with this process, this process started in June of 1994 and has become a very successful annual process the board and staff undertake. It has become one of the hallmarks of our community engagement with our families. AZAC is comprised of two appointees per elected trustee and one appointed by the superintendent. A very high-level overview of the process before we get to the recommendations is every summer, district staff, including region superintendents, and now the entire executive leadership team review opportunities based on feedback from schools and our school building capacity figures that may lend themselves to be more optimal environments for families by being able to adjust schools that have capacity needs with, to start up with schools that may have overcrowding in certain situations. AZAC then takes up these focus areas to conduct the real work, which I'm very grateful to our members, a part of that committee, that we're recognized. They really refine the focus areas as well as any focus areas they may have coming into it. The commission members do oftentimes bring great experiences and insights that the team does then explore. District staff often will hold community meetings and attend school organizational team meetings in the fall, followed by public input meetings in January. So very to say, we had a, happy to say, we had four successful focus areas, which resulted in the recommendations tonight. And I'll now turn the presentation over to Ms. Murphy.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, interim superintendent Dr. Larson-Mitchell, Tracy Murphy for the record. Item 3.01 on the agenda is proposed rezoning from Wayne Tanaka and Judith Steele Elementary Schools to Shelley Berkeley and Dawn and Dee Snyder Elementary Schools. Due to the increasing enrollment at Judith Steele and Wayne Tanaka Elementary Schools and current growth in the area from residential development, it is necessary to provide enrollment relief to these schools. Shelley Berkeley is currently at 83% of capacity, and Dawn and Dee Snyder are at 84% of program capacity. Currently, Judith Steele is at 122% of program capacity, and Wayne Tanaka is at 112% of program capacity. The Attendance Zone Advisory Commission met throughout the fall at public meetings, and an evening public input meeting was held at Sierra Vista High School on January 15th. On the map that's attached to this agenda item, Area A is being proposed from Wayne Tanaka to Shelley Berkeley Elementary School, Area B from Wayne Tanaka to Dawn and Dee Snyder Elementary School, and Area C from Judith Steele Elementary School to Dawn and Dee Snyder Elementary School. Following the public input meeting in January, AZAC reconvened, and they recommended this rezoning by a majority vote.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I would like to open it up for a discussion. Thank you, trustee Dominguez.
I was ready for a motion. I appreciated the Attendance Zoning Advisory Commission, you know, volunteerism. And I, as a previous AZAC member, proud AZAC member, I implore, you know, parents, community members to come and join the AZAC committee. It's a great way to be involved in the schools. So I'm ready for a motion, if you are.
We got to take public comment, please.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you. Anyone else? Trustee?
I'll wait for you.
Okay.
You're good?
I'm good.
So the privy to when we are having the opportunity to have briefings, I really appreciate the fact that you respond to all of our questions. And I want to make it public because I think it's important to acknowledge these volunteers on our committees because they don't get paid. And so that's a lot of time and effort and dedication to our community, the fact that they're going to SOT meetings, the fact that they're meeting, the fact that they're listening to parents and constituents themselves. One of the questions that I want opened up is asked about how are we communicating with the transition to the new students that would be going to the receiving school? So could you just give us an example of some of that two-way communication, which we're trying to elevate a little bit better?
Trustee Asparza Soffrigan, the schools we are in communication with as far as the rezoning from the very beginning of zoning. And the schools send out notifications through Parent Link prior to a meeting when a recommendation has been done. As also, any approvals that the board may approve tonight, that information is provided directly to the schools, along with information on those students who will be coming to their school so that the schools can reach out to those communities. Some of the schools already have. They've reached out to the SOT meetings, they've attended the other schools' SOT meetings so they can speak on their school and what their school is like when those students come.
Brenda McLaughlin, for the record, it's more related to item 3.02, but you asked for a specific example. I think the Robeson Middle School one was a very good example where the school students were going to, worked very closely. And this is a testament to Mr. Brill, the principal of Robeson. And from what it's described to me, a very successful culture where those counselors are going to come onto site, meet with those students, and get their schedules set up and make that transition a lot more easily achieved with clubs, activities as well. So a full kind of integration with those students and where they're going.
Thank you. And I know we may have further discussion, Chair. Chair for the next, but I would like to second the motion that is on the floor.
There's no motion. We're waiting for public comment.
Forgive me after public comment.
Is there anyone else? All right, for public, public comment? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, trustee Sastori.
No worries, not your fault. One quick question. On the January 15th Town Hall, how many were in attendance approximately? And if you said that, I apologize.
Trustee, in attendance at the meeting were two parents. One parent who had expressed questions about her two children and how this would impact her children, and another parent who had asked about other options to rezoning that we also discussed at that meeting.
Thank you, trustee Cavazos.
Thank you, trustee Henry. I'm going to make sure with our interim superintendent that I'm getting this correct. But back in the day, before we had an AZAC committee, who was responsible for doing this incredibly difficult work?
Madam President, members of the Board, trustee Cavazos, I started in 94 when this commission started, so I would need help on that historical knowledge. Do you have the answer?
I believe it was the Board of Trustees, if I'm not mistaken.
There we go.
And so I just want to give a huge thank you to every single member of the AZAC committee, including my colleague, trustee Dominguez. This is an incredibly hard job, so just echoing with my colleague, trustee Asparza Soffrigan, huge thank you for doing this.
Thank you all so much. Now we'll have public comment. Angie, Ms. Angie, oh, oh, no.
Hi, my name's Angie Ono, Annie Ono, and I'm one of the parents that showed up out of the two at the AZAC meeting. And I just wanted to say we're hurt by the transition that's going to happen. When we did buy our home, we weren't expecting to have to change. My daughter is autistic, so it's a hard change for her and me and for her sister. We didn't plan on telling her sister that it's in third grade because she kind of overheard, you know, case management. And then from there, her grades had just went down. Like, she was an A student, and all of a sudden, she doesn't even want to go to school. I don't really have anything to ask for. I just want you guys to kind of help me start doing that transition now because I don't have that time to wait, you know, for later on or during the summer or whatever. You know, I'm like, I would like the transitioning to start sooner or later than later. Pretty much it. It's hard. It's hard on us. And I know it's for you guys to make the decision, but for us, it's not going to be that easy. We've been there since the beginning, and it's just going to be hard. I just want to.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have David Gomez.
David Gomez, for the record, Nevada Peace Alliance president and former AZAC commissioner for many, many years. When I was AZAC commissioner, I also served as a president or the chairperson as well at one point. But I understand that a lot of things are not conveyed correctly sometimes because I've sat up there and I have listened to AZAC. Now, they do a wonderful job. Director Murphy and Rick Baldwin and a lot of these guys out there, they do a lot of hard work. But a lot of things were. But a lot of things wasn't conveyed to transportation when I used to sit up there, and they would get up there and say, "Well, why didn't you do this?" And they're like, "I don't know what the heck is going on." And I would have to intervene and say, "Listen, you guys are not communicating somewhere. There's a, there's a missing part here." I know that some of these kids can be grandfathered in and pushed over and kept in there until they can transition to the right school at that point, but in the presentation, I didn't hear that, that we're going to grandfather some of the kids, and we have talked to some of the parents, and I understand that AZAC does it. They advertise on the website, CCSD website, because when I was there, there was no AZAC connected to it. We had our own separate thing you had to look for and find and figure out. I've done many miles walking and talking to parents and doing a lot of different things when I was on AZAC, but, you know, I'm pretty sure that they were happy that I was gone because I was the one that challenged and questioned a lot of things, and I made sure I did it. And, you know, we gotta think about these children. We gotta think about, we're talking about social-emotional, you know? So, these kids are transitioning. I got little ones, too, and when they're used to being around their friends and the kids that they're used to in the neighborhood that they hang out in or they live in, some of these kids, you know, they're used to this environment with the kids that they know. They're used to going to school with these kids, and then now you're putting them in a whole different area with a bunch of kids. And I understand we need to separate it out. We need to get some of the kids over. We need to feed them over to some of the other schools. I completely understand that. We don't want to overpopulate one school versus the other and have under attendance in one versus the other. But, you know, these are the things that I knew and I saw as an AZAC Commissioner, and I didn't get as much thank yous as I heard today, but I'm grateful that you guys are thanking, thanking them. I got a certificate and some donuts and some free food, but at that time, you know, that it was what it was. So, I would like to really hear the consideration of how some of these parents are gonna be grandfathered in till their children can get used to getting transitioned out or they understand at that point. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez, and thank you for your service. May I entertain a motion to approve? Oh, you have it.
My understanding is the trustee may want to have another question for the presenters. It's perfectly okay. Just always the format is anytime there is any kind of discussion among the Board, we follow it up with public comment before we go into action.
Thank you. Trustee Biassari.
Hello. Thank you for your presentation and all the hard work you do. I did have a question. Can you briefly explain the grandfather clause and who's eligible for it?
Trustee Biassari, the Attendance Zone Advisory Commission makes recommendations for grandfathering on middle school and high school students. Those are the recommendations that AZAC makes. They do not make recommendations on elementary schools. Some of the reason for that is because grandfathering on elementary schools is done for the reason that the schools are overcrowded, and when it comes to looking at rezoning at elementary schools, it's because it's a capacity issue and a growth issue. Implementing grandfathering on elementary schools would delay the benefit of the relief of the rezoning for five to six years.
Thank you so much. Trustee Barone.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam President. What we're talking about here is public policy. If we have resources that are available for more of our students, we should most definitely be pressing these resources where they are needed. I hear that we have a school at a one-hundred-and-twenty percent capacity, and another one well over one-hundred percent. These zoning, this committee got together to relieve that kind of pressure. Now, I understand that, of course, you know, children, they get used to what they're used to, but, you know, why don't you try sitting in a classroom that has way too many children and not enough adults and not enough chairs in it? What kind of, what kind of pressure is on that school? What kind of, hey, anybody here who's had children who have gone to an overcrowded school knows exactly what kind of pressure on those children and what kind of, what kind of, what kind of a psychological impact is on, is on those families? Not to mention the psychological impact that you have with teachers who are overwhelmed. And I've been one of these teachers who has had forty-five, fifty kids plus in a portable, okay? So, please do not lecture us on what is, you know, appropriate. We have, we have a set of professionals who've gotten together and made a really good recommendation. We have members of the public who have done a really good job in actually reallocating resources. And if you, and if we're not looking correctly here, we have, again, two schools that are, that are a little bit under capacity. Well, I know if I had my children at a school that was well over capacity, I know I would definitely be looking at other options, including going to charter schools. I think it is the, most definitely, the, 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 part of the, part of what the duty of this Board is, is to make sure that children who are, and families who are under our protection should be allocated every resource that they can be having, okay? That's what this is about. I will ask one question to, to someone in staff. Can someone please come and tell us a little bit about the effects of overcrowding in our schools? And can that be weighed against maybe a few, a few kids being, losing opportunity to go to the schools that they've been going to? Do we have anybody who can testify to that?
Thank you, Dr. Larson Mitchell.
Madam President, members of the Board, for the record, Brenda Larson Mitchell. As a school district, we need to ensure that all of our students have positive, effective, safe learning environments, and along with being engaged and safety, it is definitely more effective when we are meeting program capacity and not over it.
Thank you very much, Madam Superintendent. I really appreciate that, Wright. And it is, of course, also a mission of this Board to be fiscally responsible and to be using the resources that we have in quite a responsible manner, not just right now, but in the near-to-long-term future. I really applaud the work that our staff and, of course, our committee has done. I applaud you, Wright, and I don't see why we're wasting any more time on this. We have other pressing issues. And if I had a vote, I know exactly where to go.
Thank you, trustee Barone. Trustee Dominguez.
Thank you, trustee Henry. This is for Ms. Murphy. If you could remind me, and just for our constituents and my colleagues, Areas A, B, and C, how many students are in each respective area?
Trustee Dominguez, Area A, which is being rezoned from Tanaka to Berkeley, has currently twelve students. There is some growth in that area as well. Area B is forty-five students being rezoned from Tanaka to Snyder, and Area C is one hundred and forty students being rezoned from Steele to Snyder, and there's quite a bit of growth in that area as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Murphy, and I, as a, as a previous AZAC member, I'm very aware of the grandfathering is only through middle school and high school, and if our, if my colleagues are ready, I'm ready for a motion. We're back to comment, public comment?
Yes. Trustee Biassari.
I just wanted to add as a follow-up comment. Public comment is never a waste of time. That is part of our job, is to sit here and receive the feedback, so we definitely don't feel that we should be lecturing anyone if we feel we're being lectured. So, I just want to make sure that, that line of communication stays open and we don't discourage anyone from speaking up. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Cavazos. All right, we're ready for public comment. Can we please have Mr. Matthew Tramp? Who is also a member of AZAC. Thank you for your service.
I'm not used to this. Okay, sorry, I'm not used on this side. Matthew Tramp, I'm the District E representative, which consists of this focus area. My other District F colleagues, and we did look at many different options, but we felt that this was the best balanced way. One of our options, we felt, really way too many people from Tanaka, so we came up with a good compromise there. As for Steele, I believe Steele is expected to have over three hundred projected growth, so there was another option, but we felt that we were, they were more closer to Steele than they were to Snyder, too, so that's why we made the decision to settle on Section C, so I just wanted to finish up.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else that has public comment on 3.01? All right, seeing none, if we can have a motion to approve, trustee Dominguez.
Thank you, trustee Henry. I'd like to motion to approve 3.01, school zoning, 2025-2026 school year for Wayne Tanaka Judith Steele Elementary School to Shelley Berkeley and Dawn Lee Snyder Elementary School. And this would reassign students in kindergarten through fifth grade living in the areas described from Judith D. Steele and Wayne and Tanaka Elementary School to Shelley Berkeley, Dawn Lee Snyder Elementary School, beginning 2025 through 2026 school year is recommended.
Thank you, trustee Dominguez. Trustee Cavazos.
Thank you, trustee Henry, and I will second that motion to approve item 3.01.
Thank you so much. There is a motion in a second. Please cast your votes. That motion passes. Before I open up item 3.02, is there anyone who did not get a chance to fill out their public speaker card? Please do so now, and we'll open item number 3.02.
Item number 3.02, Tracy Murphy for the record. Item 3.02 is a recommendation from the Attendance Zone Advisory Commission. This is due to the Board-approved revision five of the capital improvement program that included a recommendation to convert Del H. Robeson Middle School to a Choice High School. In order to facilitate this change, it's necessary for AZAC to dissolve the attendance boundary and reassign the current students at Del H. Robeson Middle School. This recommendation is to reassign students in Area A on the map from Del Robeson Middle School to Mario and Joanne Monaco Middle School. Area B on the map from Del Robeson Middle School to Roy Martin Middle School, and Area C from Del Robeson Middle School to Dwayne Keller Junior High School. These areas that are being reassigned are the entire attendance boundary of elementary schools. So, the elementary school in Area A, Area B, and Area C will feed directly to that middle school in its entirety in order to keep that cohort group together from elementary to middle school. Additionally, we had the public input meeting for this area. AZAC members and staff also attended to an SOT meeting at Robeson to discuss with parents any of their concerns and get feedback from them on this rezoning. And following the public input meeting, AZAC approved this rezoning recommendation to the Board by a majority vote.
Thank you so much. Now, I'm ready for discussion.
Thank you, trustee Henry.
I have trustee Dominguez.
Sorry, you didn't, you looked at me, but you didn't call me.
It's okay, I got you.
Thank you. I, this is for Ms. Murphy. Can you go over the capacities of the schools, the, the number of students being moved in each zone, and if there were any additional transportation costs?
Trustee Dominguez, yes. In Area A, that rezoning is three hundred and thirty students from Robeson Middle School to Monaco Middle School. Area B is two hundred and fifty-seven students from Robeson Middle School to Martin Middle School, and Area C is two hundred and five students from Robeson Middle School to Keller Junior High School. The capacity of Roy Martin, Roy Martin is currently at sixty-seven percent of capacity. Monaco Middle School is at fifty-seven percent of capacity, and Keller Junior High School is at sixty-six percent of capacity. So, when AZAC looked at these numbers and looked at the number of students being rezoned, that would increase the capacity at these middle schools, but would not bring them over capacity with this rezoning.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. And then, were there any transportation costs associated to this?
Trustee Dominguez.
It's very close in proximity, so I don't know if there was, but I don't remember from my memory if there was any. Oh, I see someone coming down.
Good evening, trustee Henry, trustee Henry. Other trustees, trustee Dominguez, Michael Demarest Transportation for the record. So, from this recommendation, the total increase, estimated increase in operational costs for transportation would be three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and five dollars and sixty-eight cents. That represents a two-bus decrease overall from the transition to Monaco, two-bus increase to Roy Martin, three-bus increase to Keller, and one-bus increase to Smith, totaling a total increase of four buses across all the schools.
That's good to hear. Thank you. Thank you for that information, and I appreciate that because that helps to know that we are utilizing good, good use of taxpayer money, so thank you.
Thank you. Trustee, trustee Asparza Sofrigen.
Thank you for the presentation. I want to just have a question because in our briefing, I asked about the grandfathering for middle school, and it was my understanding that sixth and seventh grade would be grandfathered to remain and to continue until their eighth-grade year. But what if a student chose to maybe relocate? Is that an option?
Trustee, so in this situation, and in other, in the next item, as a matter of fact, that middle school, there is grandfathering that AZAC recommended with that. In this situation, AZAC did not recommend grandfathering because the school will be non-operational at, at the end of this year.
Thank you for that. And then, my follow-up question, speaking of the Choice High School, what is the grades that will open up the school, the Choice High School?
Brandon McLaughlin for the record. Choice High School is of our magnet, that's the closest resemblance to it, tend to be nine, ten, grades nine to ten, but we actually do have like South CTA opening this fall, which will only have a ninth-grade enrollment, so they don't open with the full capacity when they open.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else that has discussion? Y'all sure? Okay, thank you. We'll, we'll go to public comment, please. Do we have any public comment for, we don't have any public comment, seeing none. If I can have a motion to approve 3.02. Trustee Dominguez.
Thank you, trustee Henry. I would like to motion to approve 3.02, school zoning for Del Robinson Middle School to Roy Martin and Mario C. and Joanne Mark, Marco Middle School and Dwayne Kelly Junior High School, grades six, seven, and eight, living in areas described, beginning the year 2025 through 2026 school year.
Thank you. Is there a second, trustee Biassari?
I would like to second the motion.
Thank you. There's a motion in a second. Please cast your votes. That motion passes. Next, before I open item 3.03, is there anyone who did not get a chance to put their public comment card in? Please do so now, and we're ready for your presentation.
Item 3.03 is recommended rezoning from Del Webb Middle School to Charles A. Silvestri Middle School. Due to the large Inspirada and West Henderson master plan developments under construction that are expected to yield additional middle school students in the Delhi Webb Middle School attendance zone in the coming years, utilizing available capacity at Charles A. Silvestri Middle School may provide some enrollment relief to Del Webb Middle School. Currently, Del Webb Middle School is at 109% of capacity with significant anticipated growth in that attendance zone. Silvestri Middle School is currently at 68% of program capacity and could provide enrollment relief. This recommendation is with grandfathering of currently enrolled grade 6 and 7 students within the reassigned area and to reassign incoming grade 6 students each year and newly enrolled students to the area as described from Del Webb Middle School to Charles Silvestri Middle School. There was a, excuse me, there was a public input meeting on January 13th, and AZAC members as well as DZG staff attended two SOT meetings. In addition, at the public input meeting, we had two speakers. One speaker was in favor of grandfathering, and the other speaker had asked about sibling attendance as far as the zoning recommendation.
Thank you so much. I'll open it up for discussion, trustee Biassadi. Okay, thank you, trustee Dominguez.
Thank you. Ms. Murphy, for Section A, how many students are affected? And after that, if, what if any transportation costs are involved?
Trustee Dominguez, 401 students in that Area A. That Area A also, I'll mention, is a complete attendance boundary again for an elementary school. So those students will attend with their cohort group, attending Silvestri rather than Del Webb as they matriculate onto middle school, but they will be with their feeder school alignment.
And trustee Henry, other trustees, trustee Dominguez. The area indicated there is eligible for transportation to both schools. So the increase in operational cost will only exist during the phase-out period, but the operational cost increase will be approximately $188,852.84. And that's just going to be kind of a balloon increase, if you will, for the two years that phase out because there's going to be one bus servicing Silvestri and one bus servicing Del Webb from the same area. Once the phase out is complete, operational costs will go back to essentially what it is right now.
I see. So that's for grandfathering. Those are for the kids that are being grandfathered. Those are kind of helping the transition. Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Barone.
Thank you, Madam President. I know there are going to be some increased costs with busing, but that's still cheaper than building additions or adding more portables or trying to cram more people into this building, correct? We're seeing net savings?
Brandon McLaughlin for the record, absolutely. And I will say, I'll invite Ms. Murphy to maybe list off how many portables are at currently at Delhi Webb.
No, I mean, I don't want to talk about portables. Well, then again, I love teaching out of a portable. I get all the air conditioning and heating that I wanted, and I parked right next to it for like the last 18 years of my career. But, you know, yeah, I get it. I just really applaud, I'm really happy that the attendance committee and of course staff is actually looking five to 10, even 15, 20 years ahead with bringing, with the thought of bringing these cohorts again. I think that's really good public policy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Trustee Asparza Strofigan.
If there's no further discussion, would you accept a motion at this time? Or there's, oh, spoke too soon.
Okay, trustee Cavazos. Oh, and we have no public comment. Any other hearing none? Thank you, Mr. Camejo.
Hello, everyone coming up for the record. Just a quick public comment. It would be, just a recommendation, it would be nice to actually have a bond oversight committee meet with the zoning committee. Maybe every quarter, every once in a while, every blue moon. Because as we are rezoning these schools and we talk infrastructure and building these schools, we never talk to each other. So when we have Mr. Barron stuck in a portable for 18 years, sorry, Mr. Barron. But we never have that, we never have those discussions on, as we could. And so if we actually join forces with the two different committees, we can actually have a deeper conversation and for the needs of all our students in the valley. And so that's just my recommendation is, and then that way we can, you know, we can have, because some of us serve on two committees, on zoning and on bond. But it would be good for everybody to get together in a one big room and actually get to meet each other and talk about, because at the end of the day, it affects our students, our children in the valley. So if we have zoning talking, but then bond oversight, we're not, you know, we're trying to plan schools for the next, you know, 10 years ahead of time, but we're not meeting in the middle. That's just really what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your service. Do we have any others for public comment?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Binder.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, interim superintendent Larson Mitchell. I'm also a former AZAC member for District A. And we have someone in the room who can, well, many in the room that can attest that when I joined AZAC, I came very prepared. And I actually felt it was a duty as an AZAC member to pay attention to bond oversight and have those conversations with staff when we were meeting and during. We have a lot of meetings, right? It's not just these public meetings. The cycle starts, as Ms. Murphy can tell you, it starts like in like two months to do this all over again for the next season. And I think that's where the joke came in. Like my last name is Binder, but I came in with a binder with about 100,000 tabs in it, like in five years of data. So I did take that role very seriously. I like Abraham's idea. However, I don't think the committee could actually facilitate that within their schedule, especially when we have policies that we have to follow in creating the new season and like district policies, right? But I, like I said, as a member, took that responsibility personally and included myself to listen in. And if there were problems, not with AZAC, but in the community that had to do with facilities, I showed up at bond oversight and participated in public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no other public comments at this time. And may I have a motion? Trustee Asparza Strofigan, did you want to make a motion? Okay, trustee Cavazos.
I was going to defer to trustee. Okay, I'll go ahead and make a motion at this time to approve agenda item 3.03.
Yes, and there's a motion on the floor. May I have a second? Trustee Dominguez.
I will second the motion.
Thank you, trustee Dominguez. We have a first on the floor. And a second, can you please cast your votes? That motion carries. Thank you. Next, before I open item 3.04, if there's anyone who wants to give public comment, please fill out your yellow card now. We would appreciate it. And we're ready for a presentation.
Madam Chair, members of the board, item 3.04 is a recommendation of rezoning from Liberty High School to Silverado High School. This is due to, again, to the large Inspirada West Henderson master plans under construction that are expected to yield additional high school students in the coming years in the Liberty High School attendance zone. Liberty is currently at 127.7% of capacity. Silverado is at 77.43% of capacity. This zoning recommendation does include grandfathering of currently enrolled grade 9, 10, and 11 grade students within the reassigned area and to reassign incoming grade 9 students each year and newly enrolled students to the area as described from Liberty High School to Silverado High School. As part of this rezoning evaluation, AZAC also took into consideration the new South CTA that will be opening in that area in the fall. Area A on the map is being rezoned from Liberty High School to Silverado High School. That's 51 students. Area B is rezoning from Liberty High School to Silverado High School. That's 177 students. Area A improves feeder school alignment from the middle school to Silverado. It was divided between two middle schools, and now it will be one middle school that goes as a cohort to Silverado. Area B improves feeder school alignment from elementary to middle to high school. And that's, that helps improve feeder school alignment in that area as well. There was a public input meeting on January 13th. We received zero comments. AZAC and demographics and zoning staff attended two SOT meetings at Liberty High School. And there were two emails we received, one in favor of grandfathering and one in favor of rezoning due to the overcapacity situation at Liberty High School.
Thank you so much. I'll open it up for discussion, trustee Dominguez.
There we go. Thank you, trustee Henry. This is for transportation. Thank you, Ms. Murphy, for answering all the questions before I even asked. Is there any transportation costs associated to this change?
Trustee Henry, trustee Dominguez, board of trustees, Michael Demarest Transportation for the record. Since the areas indicated are actually geographically closer to Silverado than they are to Liberty, once grandfathering is complete, this will actually be a cost savings in transportation operations. Overall, during the phase-out period, it'll be net zero, but after the phase-out period, potentially could be a reduction of two-bus routes in that area, totaling a savings of $188,852.84.
Perfect, thank you.
Trustee Stevens.
Thank you. Sometimes when it comes to the, when I think about the grandfathering, one of the concerns that always hits me is maybe, you know, single parent homes. If you have a senior going to Liberty, but your freshman is now being grandfathered over to Silverado, that's definitely a hardship. So I'm wondering if there is some type of exception or inclusionary rule for families when you have siblings that might be in a situation like that so that it's not a hardship?
Trustee Stevens. In this situation, if it were a hardship and both of the students or all of the students needed to attend the same school, COSA is available in order for the student who would be grandfathered to attend Silverado with their younger, their younger siblings.
So, so a senior would have to leave their school to go be with their freshman sibling at Silverado? That, no, that's not what she's saying.
Can you please clarify? Thank you.
Trustee Stevens, so with grandfathering, if there is a 12th grader at Liberty, they would be grandfathered to stay at Liberty?
I understand that they would be grandfathered to stay at Liberty, but the freshman would have to go to Silverado, correct? I'm asking if that, if it's of the same family group, would that freshman be able to go to Liberty, be grandfathered into Liberty because their sibling is there? Like, or do they get separated and now you have a hardship on the family?
Trustee Stevens, a couple of things when AZAC was looking at this. So if the students, because we've had questions about this also, if the students were to attend separate schools and it was a hardship for the parent to get them to those schools, if those students receive transportation with the transportation policy, both of those students would receive transportation. So that would help that parent as far as transportation with their students. If both of those students needed to attend the same school, that is their option through COSA. So for example, in this situation, the older student, if it were a hardship, they could attend Silverado under the COSA in order to keep those students together. What happens with grandfathering in this situation, too, again, is that grandfathering helps the transition for students who are currently enrolled at the school without bringing additional students to a school that's already overcrowded.
So I understand this very well, and actually very personally. My oldest son was able to get a zone variance when we had zone variances, to go to basic because he had, he wanted to do JROTC, right? And they didn't have it at Foothill. So then my son became a freshman and went to Foothill. Now, you're right, the transportation was there. But they, we did away with zone variances, and now it's COSA. And they said, no, your baby boy cannot go to basic because it's not on the COSA list. Now, you would think that that would be okay because the transportation was there. The problem became the extracurriculars. They're both wrestlers. How am I supposed to go to all these tournaments? How, they have different schedules, and I'm a single parent. It was a massive hardship on me. I had to sell my house. I lost my 2.9% rate. And I had to go get, I had to go get a new house zoned for basic so that they could both go there. The problem is, is not everybody can do that. And so I think, I think what I'm wondering is if we don't have this in place right now, and maybe this is just personal to me, but I know that there are other single parents like me out there, with this gets really hard. And I'm just wondering if that's maybe a policy that we could reconsider, a look at, if there are or could be exceptions to this rule when we're talking about families? Because not all families look the same. Just a thought.
Thank you, trustee Stevens. Is there anyone else? All right, I would like to open it up to public comment. Do we have any? No public comment. We need a card.
I know, and I, she took you my card before I could catch her. 3.04, right?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll get, thank you, Madam President, members of the board, interim superintendent Larson Mitchell. Trustee Stevens is my trustee, and I hear what she's saying. The board, at its pleasure, can revisit any policy they want, and you guys have your own policy to follow to get that done. I didn't agree with COSA when it came into play because it took that, the decision away from principles. But the goal of it was to address the overcapacity that a lot of our schools were facing. And so with staff, if you, you should go back and look at one of our maps from before COSA. And you will see all the schools that were in red, which meant they were overcapacity. And so then you go to like, the year after COSA was implemented, and it started coming down, and then you go to the next year. And so all of that kind of started getting a lot better for all of our schools across the district. And then, I didn't actually look at them recently, but I wanted to, I thought we were to a point where to a point where it was the high schools, like, the outerlying high schools. So COSA has done its job, addressing, for the most part, overcrowding across the district and our schools. Personally, I don't agree with the policy, but there's a balance there, right? Like, you're saying, there's a balance there somewhere, and going forward, COSA may not be the absolute answer, and neither maybe would be going back to variances, right? Like, you guys can do stuff about that. But I do hear you. Last year, I had to rezone my own children because Burkholder turned into a magnet school. And so I had to sit on that commission and be very frank, and, you know what I mean? And I did that. Luckily, my son got into Burkholder, so he gets to ride his bike to school like he saw his brother do to Burkholder. But Legend won't be able to go to Burkholder, so Legend's gonna get placed, you know, like that community and historical things, like, my next son isn't going to get to enjoy that because he's special education, right? And like, whatnot. So we do all make sacrifices in the community, but I would implore you guys to review that policy again and where we currently sit with the new demographics, and I'm sure Tracy's gonna choke me. No, I'm kidding. But it deserves to be looked at because you guys, I'm sure, have heard from your constituents that there's even additional issues across the community that surround that policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Binder. All right, from Trustee Dominguez.
Thank you, Trustee Henry. I'm ready for a motion, if you're ready. I do also want to clarify with my colleagues and with the public, even though I was on the AZAC committee and I made the motion as a committee member, I cleared it up with legal, and I am okay to make this motion. So now, I would like to make a motion to approve 3.04, school zoning from Liberty High School to Silverado High School, allowing grandfathering of students currently enrolled in grades nine, 10, 11 within the resigned areas, and to resign incoming grade nine students each year and newly enrolled students to the newly area as described, from Liberty High School to Silverado High School, beginning with grade nine for 2025, 2026 school year.
Thank you, Trustee Dominguez. Trustee, as far as the staff again.
I will second that motion.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor in a second. Please cast your votes. That motion passes. Next, before I open, item 4.01, and thank you all for your presentations. We appreciate you. Before I open, item 4.01, is there anyone who did not get a chance to complete a public speaker card? Please do so at this time. And I would like to open the item, the Compliance Monitoring Update, a Presentation and Discussion and Possible Action by Yolanda King of King Strategies LLC.
Thank you. Thank you, and good evening, Chair Henry and Trustees and Superintendent Larson Mitchell. My name is Yolanda King, and I am the compliance monitor for the Corrective Action Plan for Clark County School District. For this evening, there are a couple of updates that I would like to provide for you on the action steps. The first will deal with the carryforward funds, and then also, I wanted to give you an update on the forecasting models that I have been working with the finance team about. First and foremost, on page 10 of the Corrective Action Plan, there are two action steps regarding the carryforward funds. The first is to develop and implement a system to analyze and evaluate carryforward funds for each school, and then the second has to do with develop and implement a monitoring system for carryforward balances. Also, I want to make note that, well, carryforward and carryover are used synonymously, and so if I mention carryforward or carryover, it's all the same thing. For carryforward, I think it's very important to first understand what is carryforward, where carryforward comes from, and then also discuss what are some of the best practices for uses of carryforward. And the uses of carryforward become very important because at some point, if they're used incorrectly, then there's potential for instability and funds to not be available for those uses. And so I felt that it was important to just kind of educate us on carryforward and where it comes from and the uses for it. So on the presentation, the first is, what is this carryforward that we talk about all the time, right? When creating budgets for the school districts, there's a couple of components, obviously, that go into the preparation of your school budgets. First and foremost are your revenues, and when preparing the school budgets, there is a projection or an estimation in terms of how much money is anticipated to receive, to be received for the next school year, for the next school year budget. And your revenues make up, for the most part, your state sources. It can also include local sources, federal sources such as grants, and then other financing sources. So you estimate what exactly we think we'll receive for the next school year in terms of revenues. The next step is then to determine what are some of those ongoing operating costs or those expenses that are expected to be spent in the next school year. So you estimate expenses. Your biggest expense is going to be your salaries, your benefits. You have your purchase services, supplies, property, and then miscellaneous types of expenses. But for the most part, I believe around 80, 85% of your expenses are your salaries and your benefits. So those are the people that we pay, the staff that we pay on an ongoing basis. So once you have your general operating revenues estimated and you have your expenses estimated, that pretty much determines what the budget will be going forward for the next school year. So then if we move forward and we have our budget established, the sources of carryforward basically are very simple. Carryforward are made up of two things, for the most part. Recall, I mentioned that you develop a budget for your revenues, and you estimate how much your revenues that you think you'll receive in that budget year. At the end of the school year, you then take that number and you compare that to what you actually received. And if the actually received revenues exceed your budgeted revenues, so you received more revenue than you actually budgeted for, that becomes a part of carryforward because you received more money than what you budgeted for. The next part of that, and this is, the expense side of it, this probably makes up a majority of your carryforward dollars. So on the expense side of it, again, you have your budgeted expenses that you've determined how much you think you're going to spend, what you budgeted for, for that school year, and then you compare what you really actually spent for that school year. If your actual expenses that you actually incurred are less than what you budgeted, that difference becomes your carryforward. So why are your expenses, for the most part, or that make up most of your carryforward? Well, it's very simple. It is because, again, your salaries and your benefits make up a majority of your expenses. You have many positions that are vacant when you create a budget. Those vacant positions may not have been filled during the school year, so therefore you did not incur an expense on those positions. You budgeted for it, but you didn't incur an expense, so there's a budgetary savings for those positions that you did not fill. So hence the reason why the makeup of your carryforward, for the most part, are your budgetary savings from positions. So with the combination of actual revenues being higher than budgeted revenues, or actual expenses being less than your budgeted revenues, those two numbers combined equal your carryforward. I also want to make note that your carryforward amounts, you don't see that as part of a line item in your financial statements or in your budgets. It essentially is a part of your fund balance, and so that's really where carryforward kind of falls to the bottom line, if you will, and then it's carryforward to the next year. So for carryforward balances, NRS 388G outlines how you can use those carryforward dollars. Specifically, it outlines that you can use it for tutoring or supplemental academic achievement programs. You can use it for programs to support social and emotional learning or extracurricular programming for pupils, and that is within the local school precincts as well as within the large school district. So 388G dictates exactly how and what you can use those carryforward dollars for. I also want to make note that the unspent carryforward balances under 388G, you essentially have a 24-month period to use those dollars. Otherwise, they go back to the state's education stabilization fund. So anything that's over 5% goes back after two years, after the end of the year for which those dollars become carryforward. You have two years to spend, and then again, if you don't, they revert back to the state education fund. So carryforward is, for the most part, if we think about carryforward dollars and how we accumulate carryforward dollars, they really are and should be considered one-time funding, although it doesn't appear that we're only receiving it one time, and that's because of the budgetary savings with the vacant positions, but they really should be considered one-time funding. And the reason being is because you don't know from year to year what your carryforward funds are going to be like. That number can fluctuate. It is a number that may or may not be sustainable, and so therefore, you know, because of the fluctuation of what carryforward looks like, we really look at those as one-time funding sources. So your carryforward dollars should not be used for ongoing expenses. So remember, I talked about when you build a budget, you build a budget, your expenses, you determine what your ongoing costs are going to be, your permanent costs for salaries, for benefits, for services and supplies, any contractual obligations. Those are dollars that are gonna be your base budget that you, as a district, are required to pay. So carryforward dollars, again, just keep in mind that one-time monies may disappear, but your ongoing costs or your expenses, they continue. Your one-time funds can be depleted, then the organization must find new funding ways to make up, you know, any sudden budget cuts that may need to occur. The other issue that you have with carryforward budgets is you could possibly have budget shortfalls. So again, if your organization relies on one-time funding, it's temporary funding to be able to fund permanent costs, that can create a structural deficit. And basically, your structural deficit is this imbalance that you have between revenues coming in to be able to pay for expenses. So your expenses could exceed the revenues that you have coming in, therefore you have a deficit that may occur. And then there's also this false sense of financial stability. So while it may appear that the budget is balanced for the year, but the next cycle, you know, you may face deficits without really any replacement of those revenues that are coming in to be able to pay for those ongoing expenses. And then again, once those temporary funds are depleted, the organization may face fiscal crisis instead of a sustainable financial plan. And then lastly, and most importantly, is there's this risk to your essential services that can disrupt your school's public safety or infrastructure for vital services that are provided by the district. Some of the best practices that are recommended in terms of carryforward, again, carryforward are these one-time funds that are coming into, that are available to you, is really, carryforward balances should be used for pilot programs or short-term initiatives for the school district. You should really avoid paying for salaries and benefits for permanent staff unless they are tied to a pilot or a short-term initiative program or project. You can use these dollars for professional development, for enrichment programs, technology improvements or upgrades, or facility equipment improvements or upgrades. And then, most importantly, I think that the easiest and the simplest way to keep in mind, you know, these carryforward dollars is any type of recurring revenue should go for ongoing cost, and allocate your one-time funds for these non-recurring expenses. So I felt it was important to just talk about carryforward, and as we move forward and, you know, develop budgets, you know, for next year and future years for the school district, we just really have to be careful in how we use those carryforward dollars. And so when we talk about the different action steps, the school district, they have developed a way to kind of analyze and evaluate their carryforwards, keep track of those carryforwards. So they're on task with that action step and trying to, like I said, understand and know where these carryforward dollars and how they're being spent, particularly now since there's a timeframe on when they have to use these dollars. And then they're also keeping track and understanding the carryforward dollars with regard to the weighted types of fundings, because those have to be used for those specific purposes. So they're also have developed a system to keep track of those things as well. So with that, I'll stop and answer any questions that you may have with regard to carryforwards.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Trustee Dominguez.
Thank you, Trustee Henry. Thank you, Ms. King. There's been so much information regarding budgeting, so I really appreciate it, and I can't remember what meeting it was, but we previously got an enormous report, and it had a kind of like transcending lines of what was gonna occur, so I appreciate all the work that's gone into that, and I know that that's taken a lot of thought, so I appreciate that. I did have a few questions, just for clarity, and this, I know this might not be in your purview, but I just want to make sure that what do we have in place to make sure that we are, to prevent the use of ongoing operating expenses for these carryover funds?
So I will, if I misspeak, I'm going to ask for Dr. Larson Mitchell to help me with this, but that's still yet to be determined. We are, myself and the finance team are taking a look at going forward in next year's budget and trying to identify if we have any of those carryforward dollars that are allocated or will be appropriated for permanent cost. And so it's something that's an ongoing review of what we're doing, and so we'll have more information on that if we need it, or we will need it, but we'll have more information on that, just to kind of get an idea of where we sit as a district with using carryforward dollars for permanent costs.
Thank you. And I do have additional questions, and I'll just throw them out there, and you guys can keep, get them as they go. So I'm just, so that, just what measures we have in place, and then what, if we do have any unspent balances, or I guess, what's the plan for principals? Do they have a plan on what can they spend? Like, have they been given? And I know they've been throwing a lot of information, so I know they're oversaturated probably, but you said we've identified the schools, how we identified what their plan is for that money?
Melissa Gutierrez for the record, Trustee Dominguez. Now that schools can itemize where their carryforward is being spent, we are able to monitor that. We are not restricting them further than what the law restricts at this point. So for example, they may choose to purchase staffing with carryforward for certain projects that may not last forever. For example, if they have a very new teaching staff, they may choose to purchase additional learning strategies to build capacity in that staff. We still have students moving through our school system that have gaps from COVID, so they may choose to reduce class sizes temporarily, or to staff additional teachers, or support professionals for tier-two or tier-three instruction. So there are reasons why they would purchase staff with carryforward dollars, and we are not restricting that at this time, but we are monitoring it.
Good. Thank you. And then, is it applicable to... And then, is it applicable to equipment and other resources that the schools can use? Are they looking at, what do my, what does my school need five, 10 years from now?
Melissa Gutierrez for the record, trustee Dominguez. Yes, they are looking at that with their school organization team. They need to determine what programming, what resources, what equipment and supplies they might need, depending on what the goals for their school are.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Asparza Stoffigan.
It's a mouthful. So actually, I want to bring up some questions that I brought up in the briefing, because I think, and thank you for the team for being in the room, because it's helpful for people to be educated about what this money represents. So one of the things that I know has been a question is the encumbered projects. So if something is being started for a school, let's say they're repurposing a gym, or they're replacing theater chairs or whatever, I know that's not part, but they have the autonomy to do those things with their money according to the law. So my question is, what if that doesn't expire in the time that they are expected to spend the money?
So I don't know if Diana is here, but my understanding is the encumbered piece is separate on the financial statements. It's not a part of your carry forward, and so those dollars will continue to be encumbered until spent. That's generally how it works. So that's, I believe, and from my understanding, those are two separate things, when you talk about encumbrance and when you talk about carry forward. They're two separate line items that are part of the ending fund balance.
Madam Chair, if I may, Kelly Coell-Paul for the record. There's nothing in the law that prevents funds from being reverted to the state if it's encumbered, if they're encumbered.
Thank you, thank you for that clarification. And then my second question for you, Ms. King, was, so schools, they have that timeline, they don't spend the money, and it goes back to the state. So where does that money go? What happens with that money? And what can the district do to try to get it back? It's a big question.
So the monies that are not spent that will go back to the state, it's the education stabilization fund, and that's a part of the statute that requires it to go to the state education stabilization fund. There's a transfer that can occur from the education stabilization fund back to the pupil-centered funding fund to go back into really the calculations of, you know, the PCFP funding. However, that is only, the transfer only can occur when the education stabilization fund is greater than 20%. And currently, right now, that fund balance is at 15%. The state is estimating, projecting for the '26, '27 biannual budget, that it will probably remain about the same. And when we think about what that dollar amount equates to, so there's probably about $860 million that's sitting in that education stabilization fund. So it's sitting there now, doesn't look like there are any, doesn't look like that balance is going to increase to above 20% anytime soon.
Thank you, trustee Barone.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Ms. King, of course, Rancho High School student body president, class of 1986. You've got to throw it out there, right?
Just tell you, don't say the year.
Okay, I meant 1996. 2006, yeah, I remember you, when you walked, first day you walked into my classroom. So there's other members on the board who remind me that they were born after I graduated from high school, but I'm not mentioning any names. Anyhow, so just for the public's perspective, I guess, how big of an issue is this here in our school, right? I guess, you know, I know we're talking about very, I think overall with our budget, we're talking relatively small margins, but they're important. Grocery stores, they operate on a very small profit margin, of course, right? How widespread is this? And are we going to have like a corrective action? Well, we have ongoing training for our administrators. Has it been incorporated, I guess, into their educating training? I myself, of course, I spent all 30 years in the classroom. I left the budding stuff for much smarter people than me, right? I have a couple of colleagues here who have been professional administrators, so maybe you could explain both those, both those issues.
So we still need to evaluate, first and foremost, I think it's important educating folks and communicating what exactly carry forward is. That's the important piece of this, and we're all learning and we're all trying to understand. And, you know, if there are dollars that are dedicated to that, you know, to permanent-type funding, yes, we will need to come up with a plan on how to unwind that, obviously, and it's not going to happen, you know, in six months or one year, but we definitely need to come up with a plan with it. I don't know to the extent of what the issues are, because as I mentioned earlier, those are some of the things that we're looking at with the finance team to try to understand how these, exactly how these carry forward dollars are used, and if those carry forward dollars are used for permanent salaries. It's my understanding that we, for the most part, if it's trying to correct or to build upon, you know, the education of the students because of COVID effects, that there are temporary services that are provided or programs provided to children, as well as pilot programs provided to children. I don't know to what extent that is, but we'll definitely want to take a look at that to see, you know, that if there are some ongoing budget issues that we'll have in the future, we just want to start building a plan for correcting that and trying to identify dollars that can replace the carry forward dollars that are using for permanent purposes.
I guess for me, the most important part is that we are addressing this, and we have a corrected action in the future here. That will help out. That's the most important message, I guess, that I was trying to kind of tease out. Thank you.
Trustee Dominguez.
Thank you. I circled back around. I had some more questions as I heard my colleagues. Are there options for schools to, if they don't want to use the funds, that we can transfer to another school or capital improvement or another fund?
Madam Chair, if I may, Kelly Coell-Paul for the record. Off the top of my head, there's an order of operations for things that schools are allowed to use carry forward funds for. They start at tutoring and something for that school, then something else for that school, I don't have it all memorized. Then it's services and extracurricular stuff for all schools or all district schools. There's nothing specific about transferring from one school to the other. It's something we could look forward, we could look into, but there's options there for providing services to students that are outside of the individual school.
And maybe I can offer that as a suggestion, once we get to the, you know, 12-month mark, eight-month mark, to those schools that we've identified, to kind of say, if you don't have a plan, maybe we should put them towards a school that could utilize them for, I don't, whatever is needed there, so that might be an option. And then another question I had was, what is, what is the max or maybe the average you can give me of the carry over funds that a school has right now?
Kelly Coell-Paul for the record. The range is as low as $30,000 to up to $10 million for one school.
For one school.
Great variety across the district.
Oh, okay. Wow, okay, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Asparza Stoffigan.
Thank you for that. You know, I appreciate that as we're learning lessons about working together and communicating and having your expertise, Ms. King, as well, it's just been so, it's been hard to get into kind of what we don't know, right? And I think what the public doesn't understand, when a school doesn't spend their carry over money, it's not because they don't have a need. The restrictions that are here are categorical, and so for schools to have to spend money on tutoring, you only have a certain amount of school year to do that. So I just, I really think we need to do a messaging job on our part, and I'm owning this as a trustee, as now, my new hat, going up to the legislative body next week. We're going to be up there. And I think we need to do a better job of saying, if principals don't spend their money, there's a lot of other mitigating factors that impede them from doing that. Not that, not that we shouldn't guide them. I think that's important. So I just want it to be understood that if a school doesn't spend their money, that they're, they're being actually very methodical and strategic on spending it wisely. So speaking of, how are we supporting our principals with these hard decisions? Because a lot of the budget cuts that came this year, they had to maybe go into some carry over to save positions. So can someone speak to, kind of, what are those conversations looking at to wean us off of that situation?
Madam President, members of the board, for the record, Brenda Larson Mitchell. If I could just add on to what you were saying, trustee, we do have schools, as Ms. Coell-Paul said, there's a range of carry forward. I think it's also important to remember that there are schools that have a lot of vacancies, and so they receive those attrition dollars as carry forward. I think it's also very important for us to remember that with our ESER relief, as we presented at the last board meeting, our district received over $777 million in COVID relief. We bought a lot of materials, working collaboratively with schools, so they didn't have to spend their resources on things that we were purchasing, which is another reason for the carry forward. So I do think it is very, very important, and as a previous principal, I remember too the days where we were cutting, and so principals tend to save because, you know, they want to keep their people. So there are a lot of reasons for the carry forward, and I think it's very important for us to be aware of those and to be knowledgeable and to advocate that that money should stay in the Clark County School District. I'll let Ms. Gutierrez or Ms. Coell-Paul talk about the conversations that are happening, because we do have protocols in place in which principal supervisors do talk with principals on using that carry forward. Thank you.
Melissa Gutierrez for the record, trustee Asparza Stoffigan. One of the things that we are doing is working on embedding questions regarding their carry forward and how it's being spent on student achievement in alignment with their school performance plan and the five existing monitoring conferences that school supervisors currently have with principals. So while they are having those conversations about student achievement data and about chronic absenteeism and the challenges they may be experiencing and what their data looks like, they are also having conversations about what the budget looks like and how they are using that money then to support those school goals and to support student achievement. So that is all being embedded in those existing conferences.
Trustee Cavazos.
Thank you, trustee Henry, and thank you all for everything. I have a quick parent constituent question, because most of my questions have been answered during the briefings. So this person wants to know, and she did want to say that she's a member of the SOT, would like to know how much flexibility the site leaders have. She gave the example of a program that they wanted to have, I'm speaking carefully here, they wanted to have within the social, emotional category, but that it was not approved. So the best way I can ask the question is just how much flexibility do the site administrators have within the approved categories?
Kelly Coell-Paul for the record, trustee Cavazos, that's not a budgeting restriction, and of course, not knowing the particulars, the funds here are restricted only by board and district policy as any other funds would be, in addition to those requirements in the law.
Thank you. I promised her that I would ask the question, so I appreciate that answer. Thank you so much.
Thank you, trustees. Are there any other questions, discussions? We'll now have public comment. Can I please have Anna Binder? She stepped out. Okay. She better hurry.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Brenda Larson Mitchell, nice to see you being on this side. For the record, my name is Ed Gonzalez. I'm a member of the Hickey Elementary School organizational team, but I'm speaking as an individual. Some of you guys might have noticed me getting a little angry back there, so I do appreciate Yolanda King's presentation. It is a very simple term of how to explain carry forward, which is needed for many people who don't know what it is. But some of the comments that are being mentioned, we asked about how carry forward money is being used. We know that two years ago, every principal had to send in a Google form to explain how they're using carry forward money. We know this, and we are put onto two different timeframes. One, we have a two-year limit to do it. So we have schools that have a lot of money. For example, if we took, swept the money right now in the fall, it'd be hundreds of millions of dollars that would tip the education stabilization fund. For an example, Rancho High School, they have $9 million, because when they had the incident, the terrible incident, the child's death, many teachers left. Previously before carry forward, that money would go back to the district, and if it was taken right now from the state, it'd be over $7 million, more than some elementary school's entire budget. It's ridiculous, this law. But my also problem is, when we talk about carry forward, it is tough to use. I can tell you, our school's use of a five-year attempt to get cameras, where we have half our cameras, and the district couldn't do it and sent us half our money back. So we have school safety issues. There's other things too, when you talk about budgeting. Ms. King is correct about ongoing costs. Our school had $1.8 million in the fall. We had a budget of $600,000 in the deficit plan, because we were told constantly, you're hoarding the money, you got to spend it, so we did. And then the budget crisis came in the fall. So that difference, we took a $433,000 cut from ill and at-risk money, and our costs in staff increased by $251,000. That's a kind of a $700,000 that we absorbed because we had carry forward money. If I tried to do the same budget we did last year to this year, for that $600,000, it cost us over $1.3 million. That does include a drop of 25 students, so that does have an effect into it. What we're seeing is it increasing costs and using carry forward to defend. To give you an example, $5,700 from last spring to the fall was how much the average teacher salary increased. Based on the numbers that the district has given, this one from the fall to the spring is 5,600, a difference of about 50 bucks. We haven't talked anything about that. How much have we developed the budgets to say, here's your costs and here's how much revenue is coming in? We don't ever hear how much revenue is coming into the district, because like I tell you right now, we all took a budget cut for people, because we don't know how much money is coming in, how this school district has developed the budget. It is scary what we're seeing right now in some of these schools. That's why you're hearing stuff happening about, we are cutting positions continuously. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll have Anna Binder.
No, I tried to go to the bathroom. Okay, thank you, Madam President, members of the board, interim superintendent Larson Mitchell. So Ed and I have obviously been talking for weeks since I first brought, you know, to like light what was going on at my elementary school, and I really do like the idea, if we could maybe advocate with the legislature to keep some of that money like at our school sites, especially if it had direction of exactly what we could spend it on, because like, for example, if a school with $10 million in carry forward reached out to my principal and said, hey, like, we barely kept $100,000 in carry forward just to pay for supplies for next year, and we had to cut five teachers, could you spare something? So maybe we could get, like, because we can't pay for tutoring next year, we can't pay for like a lot of things, that would be like really awesome. I don't think what I would want to see is like, because there's a reason why they don't let us redistribute that money. The legislature was very intent on that not happening. And as a historical reminder for the new trustees, there has been a lot of drama at the legislature and the state level over those funds, and it goes all the way back to the name we won't say out loud anymore, because it doesn't deserve to be said, being deceitful and other things. So if you don't know the history on that, let me know, I'll send you all the news articles. But there's been, what do they call it? Tension? There's been a lot of tension over that with the legislature. But I think with good intentions and guidance, instead of it going back up to the state, that we could maybe hopefully redistribute it where it is. that we could maybe hopefully redistribute it where it is really needed. Because, I mean, I put in a PRR to get more information. I haven't gotten it yet, but when that comes, I know we weren't the only school that had to cut teachers like that. And then you go into like other teachers you've heard from in the last couple of weeks where like they increased their star rating and now they're financially getting punished for that. So that's not fair either, right? We want better achievement. We want everything to improve, but we can't financially penalize schools for being better, right? So I would be glad to help have that conversation and advocate as well as just the parent and an SOT member. And, but we got to get that trust back, right? So as you guys are trying to hire our new superintendent, when you guys are talking about that political whatever, a clume or whatever, that is really important because that person is going to help you get us that trust back so they, you know, they trust us with that money to redistribute it. Thanks.
I'd like to close public comment.
I don't have any more.
Okay. And trustee Dominguez.
Thank you, trustee Henry. I'd like to motion to approve 4.01 compliance monitoring update. It says four possible actions, so I didn't know if we had it to approve.
Correct. Thank you. And trustee BSadi.
I will second that motion.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Please cast your vote. That motion carries. Thank you so much, Ms. King, for the presentation and our team. Next up, we have our legislative update. Also, this is not an action item. Thank you for the presentation.
Madam President, trustee Todd Story, chief communications officer, for the record. We're here to provide our board meeting update. I'll turn it over to Dr. Keating, and he can give you the latest from Carson City. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Story. Brad Keating, for the record, Assistant Superintendent of Community Partnerships and Government Relations. While this may not be an action item, it is packed with action just for you all to receive today. It's getting late, I'm a little punchy, I apologize. And you all are doing all the hard work. Today is the 25th day of the legislative session, which means we're approximately 20% of the way all through already. There have been a total of 605 bills that have been introduced. CCSD is tracking 128 of them. We anticipate over the next few weeks that we'll have about another 350 bills get introduced. So the next major deadline at the legislature is March 17th. All legislators must introduce their bills by that date. This is why we say LCB is working diligently to ensure all these 350 bills get written and introduced by the 17th. There was also a joint rule put in place on Monday, which details the BDRs. So the bill draft requests that have been submitted to LCB, if they're a legislative bill, legislator bill, they must be submitted and introduced by March 17th. Non-legislator bills must be introduced by March 24th. I apologize, I'm hearing something here on the mic. A recap of last week's activities. Interim Superintendent Larson Mitchell traveled to Carson City last Tuesday to update the Assembly Education Committee, the Clark County School District, and what was taking place. Gave a great presentation, a lot of it tied to what we saw in the State of the Schools address, and was able to answer a number of questions by the committee members. We also presented Assembly Bill 48, one of CCSD's bills, which concerns revisions to the bullying law. We're working with stakeholders right now to potentially include language with, language within the bill that could assist principals with determining substantiated versus unsubstantiated cases. As we know, these cases take up an incredible amount of time for our administrators every day. Senate Bill 177, sponsored by Senator Orinshaw, requires that educational decision makers be included in meetings regarding pupils in foster care. So that has not been a requirement in the past, so that was a bill brought forward that CCSD supports in making sure that the educational decision maker for that student in foster care, that they are present in IEP meetings and in any important meetings to deal with that student. This week's also been a busy one. On Monday, the Senate Education Committee, it was School Safety Day. We were fortunate to have Chief Black Eye and some of his team, the committee heard from representatives from Nevada System of Higher Education, Clark County School District, Elko County, Lyon County, and Lander County on what we were doing as it related to school safety. Also on Monday, Assembly Member Gonzalez, Cecilia Gonzalez, introduced Assembly Bill 177, which is a bill that seeks to revise the licensure requirements for our speech-language pathologists. So as currently written, that bill could negatively impact about 200 of our staff members and their current licensure through the Department of Education. So we're actively collaborating, had a meeting with the stakeholders yesterday to make sure we amend that law so that any speech-language pathologist that we currently have in the district would be grandfathered in, and they wouldn't have any negative impact in their employment with us. On Tuesday, in Assembly Education, AB 217 was heard, another bill by Assembly Member Gonzalez. This bill prohibits school districts, public schools, and their employees from granting access to federal immigration officials or providing information about students or their families without a court order. Section 2 of that bill would have banned the use of any kind of chemical agent, pepper spray, stun guns by school police officers, and school district employees against students in Clark County, would have imposed additional reporting requirements. That was struck from the, from the bill. So that bill's moving forward currently. There was also a bill, Assembly Bill 128, in Assembly Government Affairs, to establish a public records on Budsmen in the state of Nevada and state government, who will work collaboratively with every public records office across the state to make sure that we're providing all records on time. We're working through that. Wednesday, yesterday, in Senate Ed, Senator Cruz Crawford, a principal of ours, introduced Senate Bill 115. So that bill allows schools to offer a $2,500 stipend to teachers who teach in a bilingual program. So the stipend would be funded directly through the school's budget for the academic year. It would affect three schools in CCSD, Lake Elementary School, Ranno, and Desert Pines High School. It also mandates that NRS be aligned with the commission on professional standards, and it makes sure that we're providing information on the stipend so we could really track how many bilingual programs are moving forward, how those teachers are doing. It's really kind of a pilot program at those three schools to see how we will, how we are working with our students in dual-language programs. Earlier today, at 1:30, Assembly Education Committee met, they heard Assembly Bill 156 that was sponsored by Assembly Member Erica Mosca. As amended today, that bill would grant elected CCSD board members a salary equivalent to that of a county commissioner, so $90,000 approximately, and it would extend voting rights to all trustees. The Nevada Association of School Boards is collaborating with the bill sponsor currently and obviously can provide more information, and I'm sure many of you will hear stuff next week up in, up in Carson City. So that was heard today, as well as AB 24 by the Department of Ed. That really formalizes the process for offering competency-based education. It's something that districts have been moving forward to and focusing on skill mastery rather than, than time-based learning. So we're looking at that moving forward. A few final notes. Yesterday morning, the Joint Assembly Ways and Means and Senate Finance Subcommittee on K2O of Education, they received a presentation from the governor's office and the Department of Education on the state's education budgets. So we are working every day to learn more about what the state's budget looks like. It is, as the governor continues to refine his budget, the committee and the public were left with a number of unanswered questions, trying to determine where the budget is at right now. Is there, is there a gap somewhere? What do we need to do? For districts, at least, one of the big concerns is the increase to school districts. Once that 3.25 increase in PERS costs hits, that's a large impact on the district. Once you factor that in, and where the funding also is a question of where the funding will come from to cover SB 231 from the last legislative session. There are still questions unanswered regarding that. One other important development, it's not related directly to education, but it was discussed this evening at 4:00 PM, and they certainly talked about how they plan to work with the Clark County School District if the bill passes. Over the last two years, there's been a lot of interest about movie, the movie studios relocating to Las Vegas. So yesterday, there was a big announcement made with Howard Hughes Holdings, Sony Pictures, and Warner Brothers that came together and created a bill, Assembly Bill 238, where all of them will work together in one area in Summerlin, a 31-acre production facility, and be able to produce films there. So if, if the bill's approved, it will provide film, infrastructure, tax credits for those studios at a rather large dollar amount that they've got to figure out where they have in the budget. But if the bill were to pass, it's obviously expected to create tens of thousands of jobs and a number of opportunities for the school district and higher education as it relates to job training and really helping the community prepare the workforce needs for the film industry. So that was heard today at 4 o'clock. A preview, next week, there's a whole bunch happening. The Department of Ed has a few bills up. CCSD is presenting, Ms. King gave a great presentation and talked about the education stabilization account this evening. We will be presenting Assembly Bill 47, which was brought forward by the board, which allow, would allow for funding in the future from the educational stabilization account to provide dollars for districts to recruit and retain our licensed staff. So she talked about the current percentage we're at. Once we hit that 20% cap, what would occur is over that 20%, 20% cap inside the educational stabilization account. Once we hit over 20%, there would be a formula for districts to receive the dollars back to help with recruitment and retention of, of our staff. We also look forward on Wednesday to seeing many of you smiling faces all day long at the legislative building for NASB Day. That should be a fun day, and I know it's an action-packed schedule for you all. Before I open up for questions, I know Nathaniel Wa is watching up in Carson City, my great partner in crime up there. I'm greatly appreciative of the work he does every day, and you'll have a chance to see him next week. And I also wanted to let you know there was a request, trustee Zamora had a request about the weekly report that we send out to our, our community groups. So we included in that weekly report that goes out now, our bill tracker now includes a section. So we've tagged every single bill that we're tracking to see how it aligns to the district's priorities, to what you've brought forward, and whether it does or whether it doesn't, or if it's just an operational issue or whatever it might be. But we've tagged that, so hopefully you all have a chance to see that, and, and we're moving in the right direction. With that, we're open to any questions or comments the board may have.
Thank you so much. And trustee Dominguez.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Henry. Thank you so much for that presentation. I know there's no, this is a non-action item, so there's no public comment. So I, my question was, and I, it was, I was writing stuff down, so I didn't catch the bill, but it was the bill regarding to make it illegal for, for federal employees to enter into schools. And I, my question is, or maybe a suggestion, is if we are providing information as far as our policies and our, you know, numbers that we have for gangs, because we have a significant number of gangs here. So I don't know if we have CCSD presenting those numbers to the legislature, and if, and if we've provided our policies, which align with state and federal policies, by the way, so if, if that's happened, or is expected to happen.
Brad Keating, for the record. Thank you for the question to begin. It's Assembly Bill 217 by Assembly Member Gonzalez. So we've not given, that's a good suggestion on the number of gangs, and we could present some of that information. We have given, this bill really would not have an effect on many districts. We've provided our policies and everything we do. Clark and Washoe County School District already abide by what would be put into this bill. But they're, they're really just making sure that it's streamlined across every district.
Thank you. And I know it, it also, you mentioned included use of force. And so I know we have, like, protocols. I'll say protocols, it's not, you know, because it's a open-ended for police on depending on what kind of usage they have. So I would, if I could suggest our protocols to make sure that they know, you know, what kind of situations do arise that officers are, have to use, you know, to protect themselves.
Trustee BSadi.
Hello, thank you for your presentation. Are we following Bill DRSB 59?
Trustee BSadi, Brad Keating, for the record, yes.
Okay, and it was put forth by the Nevada Department of Education, right?
That's correct. Brad Keating, for the record. Yes, that is a, a bill that deals with the, the licensing of the individuals and how, oh, let's pull this. There are, yeah, it deals with what would happen to an educator if they were to have inappropriate contact, the revocation of licensure of the employees, all of that. Yep, we're tracking that.
Can you elaborate on what you mean by inappropriate contact?
Section 2 of Person License, person, for this chapter shall not engage in sexual impropriety with or actions that constitute the grooming of a pupil. And then it goes into each category, everything that may happen in grooming a pupil.
Thank you.
Trustee Barone.
Thank you very much. Mr. Keating, thank you very much for your presentation, and of course, it's good to, again, always say hi to Mr. Todd Story. On AP 177, I heard a little bit about it before, I guess, you know, what exactly is the legislative intent? Are they upping the standards for our speech-language pathologists? I mean, already, I could be wrong, but it's already very difficult for us to find these individuals. So what exactly is the change that is being advocated?
Trustee Barone, Brad Keating, for the record. So Assembly Bill 177 has had some mass confusion, and it's caused quite a few waves throughout the legislature. So we are, there are, we are the only state left in the United States of America that allows individuals to serve as speech-language SLPAs with a bachelor's degree. So our employees have bachelor's degrees, they're licensed educators, but then they receive an endorsement, and then they can provide speech-language services to our students. We're the only state left in the country that does that. 38 of the 50 states requires a master's degree, and the Speech Language Pathology Board, hopefully I got that right, the state's Speech Language and Audiology Board have moved a bill forward that requires that, two different things. Either you have to have a master's degree to receive the licensure moving forward, or you would be considered an assistant in doing the job. So the confusion has been this, the only time that anybody's ever received an endorsement or a license in education has been from the Department of Education. That is now moving to the Speech and Language Audiology Board. So those requirements will be stronger than what has been in the past at the Department of Education. So in, on October 1st of 2026, that will be the last available time for somebody to go receive an endorsement from the Department of Education. After October 1, it will move to the Speech Language Board. There are 411 speech-language individuals practicing speech services in the district. Of those 411, 204 of them only have bachelor's degrees. So the way the bill was written, there were a number of individuals that questioned and believed that they would lose their licensure from the State Department of Education. So in working now with Chair Marzola, Assembly Member Gonzalez, the stakeholders, we met with the Department of Education yesterday, the intent will be written into the bill that grandfathers all those 204 individuals in, and also states that none of our 411 SLPs would have to go to licensure at the Speech Language Audiology Board. They will be good, and we will move forward. Now, that will cause, in 2026, an issue for the district and for every district in Nevada to be able to keep bringing in and providing those services. But it's the belief of the, of the state, and like I said, we're the last ones left, that increasing our, our minimum requirements is what the legislature wants to do.
Thank you very much. That was a very complicated one. I didn't quite understand the nuances. the nuances. I think I'll stop right there. Thank you.
Trustee Cavazos?
Thank you, Trustee Henry, and thank you, gentlemen, for your hard work and for presenting to us. And I think that was an amazing suggestion made by Trustee Zamora on the weekly, you know, newsletter. A few questions here. On the competency-based learning, I did not, I did not get to watch the hearings today. So was that a presentation? Was that an actual bill? You know, where, can you tell me a little bit more about?
Thank you, Trustee Cavazos. Brad Keating for the record. It's Assembly Bill 24 was introduced by the Department of Education today. Really, they are making a strong push to create the competency-based education. It's been piloted in a number of areas, but they want to move from the Carnegie seat time, or Carnegie unit, and the seat time over to competency-based education. The bill, the hearing went well. There were a number of questions, because this is a big shift in education from what everybody knows and what everybody went through as kids themselves. So due to a time constraint today, they went through, every member of the Assembly Committee on Education asked one question. They all had two, another round of questions to go through. So the Department of Education was tasked by Chair Torres Fawcett to meet with each member to explain a little bit more and talk through this competency-based idea.
Okay. Thank you so much. And thank you so much for giving me the number. I was trying to take notes, too. On, let's see, AB 217, Assembly Member Gonzalez, if I heard you correctly, and I'm fairly familiar with this, this is just codifying what we're already doing as far as immigration and federal agents coming into our schools. Washoe and CCSD are already, we already have protection and a certain protocol. Is that correct?
Madam President, Todd Story for the record. Yes, that's correct. We do have a very specific protocol that we have sent out to the schools that they can follow whenever law enforcement encounters them at a school site. So it's very prescriptive in exactly what they need to do and who they need to contact in those circumstances.
Okay.
If I might, on that same bill, just to clarify to Trustee Stevens' question, the second portion of that bill talked about the use of force. So the police were very involved in our use-of-force continuum that we use here in the school district. Those parts of the bill have been amended out. They no longer exist in the bill as it is currently.
Okay. All right. I'll try to go fast here. I see other people in the queue, and I always can put myself back in there. In the bill that my colleague, Trustee Biassadi, referred to, I believe that was SB 59, you said that the sponsor is the Nevada Department of Education? Okay, all right. I just want to make sure I got that correct. And on AB 156, did we have, do we support, were you neutral, or opposed?
Brad Keating for the record. On AB 156, we did not testify on the bill today because the amendments came in, and there were additional amendments made. NASB also did not testify as we asked all of the sponsor, the sponsor to meet with them after the hearing to go through additional information.
Okay. Thank you. I'll go ahead and defer to my colleagues. Thank you so much.
Trustee Asparza Straffigan?
Thank you. I'm that person. I watched it on the playback. So I want to thank the staff and our interim superintendent and the other personnel that went up to present. I don't know, I don't know if this was planned, but we, when you presented our AB bullying bill, I don't remember, there's so many numbers, I appreciated that the administrative union, the representative Jeff Horn, came to the front to answer those questions. So I think that was really beneficial. So that kind of collaboration and, you know, it really helps to move things and progress. My question is, the SB 115, want to do kind of just congratulations. I know it's the initial hearing for our very own Dr. Shelley Cruz Crawford, who initiated that. Those stipends, although the school is, it's paying, it's coming out of their budget, do we have to engage in any kind of negotiation with the teachers' union?
Brad Keating for the record. If the bill moves forward as is and provides the stipend amount, then that would move forward as is. If not, and the amount's left open, then we've got to negotiate it.
Thank you for that. I wanted to get that clarified. The last question for now is regarding the going to ask for the funding for our recruitment. I know that it's going to be a challenge. I think it would be helpful if we, again, I'm on this thing about, can we show the return on investment, some kind of an impact report of where the funds have been utilized in the past, and how our amazing human resource department has reduced our vacancies. And I just want to make sure that we can go with showing some kind of result.
Madam President, Todd Story for the record. Just to clarify, are you talking about AB 47, our bill, or are you talking, yeah, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, right. Brad Keating for the record. As it relates to AB 47, we will, we will present and we will use some of the data pieces about the importance of the recruitment and the retention side. I think that's very valuable. We have until noon tomorrow, so I think that's a very valuable suggestion. I just want to be incredibly frank with you all, because that's the only way I know how to be. The legislature, if you're reading anything like I am, this is going to be an incredibly difficult session. There is no money available anywhere. The governor produced a budget that unfortunately did not come out balanced originally. They are still working to make sure that that is balanced. There are a number of requests. The PERS increase to districts across the state is a massive increase there. The legislature, again, in the budget presentation, provided a $2 per pupil increase in the first year, $70 for the second year. So just to be clear, if we do math, 300,000 students, we're talking about a $600,000 increase, period, for year one of this biennium. So I, we will, this Assembly Bill 47, I think, is incredibly valuable, and we're, trust me, we're going to push this bill as much as we can. But the fact is, and Ms. King alluded to it before, is even if this bill pushes forward, we're not going to hit the over 20% tomorrow. We know that this is a longer-term solution. But I think we're 20% of the way into this session. The next 80% is going to be a very difficult time for everyone as they try to figure out how to close that building down and balance their budget. So I just want to be honest with all of you, that it's, as much as we want to come in and be rosy, this is going to be a tough hundred days.
Thank you. Trustee Biassadi?
I have two questions. Do we take a position on all bills, and who exactly decides what position we take?
Thank you, Madam President, Todd Story, for the record. Trustee Biassadi, so when we had the conversation, that's a question that's come up a lot. Thank you. It depends on the platform, right? The platform is our guiding document. If it's on the platform, then we support it. If it's stated in opposition, such as, say, unfunded mandates, then we would oppose anything that is an unfunded mandate on the school district. So we look at everything relative to the platform and then make a decision from there.
And just to follow up with that, have we taken a position on SB 59?
Brad Keating for the record. We have not taken a position on SB 59, and there's no, there are no hearings scheduled currently to discuss that bill.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? Thank you so much for your presentation. We appreciate you. Okay, before I open up, Item 4.03, is there anyone who did not get a chance to complete your public speaker card? Please do so now. Okay, I'll open Item Notice of Intent, Clark County School District Policy 5129.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, interim superintendent Larson Mitchell, Kevin McPartland, Associate Superintendent for the record. I'm joined here tonight by Pam Sloan, our Director over Secondary Student Athletics and Activities. She's very excited to be up here tonight. We're here with two items for you. They're very related to graduation ceremonies. We'll start with 4.03, which is a notice of intent for a new graduation policy. The purpose of this presentation of Policy 5129 is to seek your approval of our intention to bring it back to you on March 27, 2025, for final consideration and approval. Policy 5129 is a policy that formally states that the Clark County School District facilitates graduation ceremonies as a way to celebrate students at the end of their successful academic careers. That is it. It is not new. It is just putting it in the policy. With that, we'll be happy to take any questions you have.
Trustee Biassadi? Trustee Dominguez?
Thank you, Trustee Henry. Thank you, Mr. McPartland. So my question was, this is coming from, we're just mirroring what the Nevada Department of Education is doing. We are not doing anything different than what they are doing.
4.03 is really just the policy to set the tone for the graduation regulation, which, as you said, does follow Nevada and state law, yes. But this is just the policy to state what we do.
And this is not, in a way, to prevent students from wearing, I guess, a religious or, oh, I'm already ahead of myself, aren't I? I think I am. I'm sorry. My apologies. I will defer to the next one.
Thank you, Trustee Dominguez. Trustee Asparza Straffigan?
If there's no further discussion, Chair, I'd like to make a motion at this time.
We have public comment first.
There we go.
Thank you. Trustee Biassadi? Never mind. Oh, okay. All right. For public comment, I have Anna Binder. It's, it will be separate. Okay, and may I have? Thank you. And for, next, I have David Gomez. Thank you. Okay, I'll close public comment on 4.03. Can I have a motion? Trustee Dominguez?
Thank you. I would like to motion to approve 4.03, Notice of Intent, Clark County School District Policy 5129.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second on the floor. Please cast your vote. That motion carries. Okay, before I open Item Number 4.04, is there anyone that didn't get a chance to complete a speaker card? Please do so at this time. And we're ready for your presentation.
Thank you. Kevin McPartland for the record. This is 4.04, Regulation 5129. We'd like to present this as a notice of intent for Graduation 51, Regulation 5129, again, to seek your approval of our intention to bring it back to you on March 27 for final consideration and approval. As I mentioned in the briefings, there is nothing new in this regulation that will cause any changes to the processes that have already been in place for several years at our schools. The purpose here is to formalize these items in a regulation to provide support for schools and improve communications for our families and community. I'd like to give you a high-level summary of Regulation 5129, which will serve as our general guidelines for our graduation ceremonies. First, we detail that students must be in good standing and have met all graduation requirements prior to the ceremony. For those of you that have attended a ceremony, this is not new. When the principal invites trustees up to speak, they've already certified the class. Next, we will provide details about student attire, specifically as it relates to traditional, tribal, religious, or culturally significant regalia. All of this language is taken from NRS 388.915 to ensure we are in compliance with state law. This regulation speaks to what regalia is, how it may be worn, what limits have been set for how much is allowed, and that all items must be pre-approved by the school. The language also provides support for schools to control lewd, vulgar, or inappropriate items. This, again, is nothing new for our schools. All schools have something in place for this, as Trustee Barone knows, starting with support from Rancho High School. This regulation also covers student speeches, namely who controls the invites to speak, and that the scripts must be pre-approved. And once again, the student speeches must not be lewd, disruptive, or inappropriate. Again, schools have already had this in place. Regulation 5129 includes guidance regarding foreign exchange students at graduation ceremonies. And finally, the regulation speaks to summer graduation ceremonies and specifies that participants must meet all requirements prior to the actual ceremony. With that, we are happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Trustee Dominguez.
I hit the button first, so I always get, I've been getting it first lately. Thank you. Mr. McPartland, so I just, just to put on the record, I just want to make sure we have, this is in alignment with Nevada Revised Statutes 386.365, and this is not preventing students from wearing traditional tribal regalia and recognized objects of religious or cultural significance or adornments. This is putting on the books what is already on the Nevada statute.
Trustee Dominguez, Kevin McPartland for the record. That is correct.
Trustee Asparza Straffigan?
I think people oftentimes don't understand how things come to be. And so there was a lot of things that occurred in the past, and it was never necessarily put in writing. So I will say that having kind of reached out to some of administrators that do these very special events and want to acknowledge all things of all students, that having it in writing, I think, gives everyone clear understanding and that there's a process and procedure. So I think anyone can look at that. They can find out for themselves, and it's very clear on what is the process. So thank you for making this happen.
Thank you so much. And Trustee Cavazos?
Thank you. Just a brief comment, kind of echoing what my colleague, Trustee Asparza Straffigan, said, and that we appreciate the work that you guys do with the student activities and with the graduation ceremonies. It just helps make everything a little bit clearer, the communication better, and also that people know that their children aren't being prevented from representing who they are at graduation. So we thank you and your department very much.
Trustee Barone?
Yeah, thank you very much. I know one thing that I always look forward to is, of course, the serapas sashes that my students would earn. They would have to have a certain amount of hours in participating in Hispanic Student Union to have the honor to earn that. But of course, you know, there's always got to be a balance to be struck. And I think that this regulation that pretty much follows CCSD policy, since, I think, before I ever got into education here at CCSD, we've had a, we've had a policy that bans certain types of things, you know. And I think this, but when it comes to graduation, as you pointed out, a very special process, time, it's a life's event, right? I think there is enough freedom, and there's protection for the individual and, of course, for the district. Because, you know, and I've heard nothing but our staff members, our principals and our assistant principals, who have been, you know, very conscientious, and I will leave it to their professionalism to make sure that, you know, I think I can trust their professionalism to make sure this is carried out and, you know, and put into practice as it has been done in the past. Always, there will always be Always, there will always be some disagreements here and there, but I think overall, this is a very good policy going forward, and I, it should be supported. Thank you.
Trustees Satori?
Hi, thank you for the presentation. And then, once the policy is approved, it would be located on our website and on individual school, high school websites as well.
Trustees Satori, thank you for the question. Absolutely, yes. It would be, we're all, we're all regulations and policies are available for parents to see in, in writing what the exact specifications are.
Trustee Beasadi?
So it is up to the school to enforce the guidelines that are in place, and they do have the final say?
Trustee Beasadi, thank you for the question. So let me answer that, just put on my principal hat back on and how it kind of works in the school. So, so in general, you know, this is, this is a celebration of students and the journey they go through and their families, so we want this to be a positive event. And so we do these things far in advance, so that's why it's great that we, if we were to get this through, where we could present it to, to students and to families as part of the graduation packet of, here's where we're at. We have students bring things in prior. They bring them in, so if there are concerns, as a school, like, like Trustee Barone said, like, we want to work this out. We're looking for the yes. And so if there are concerns, we talk about it with the families and try to come to an agreement of where we can find, most often, it's usually like, how, what percentage of their overall look is covered in that, the hat, where it's supposed to be flat. So it's usually things like that that we address. But absolutely, it is, it is the principle. There is due process beyond the principal to the school supervisor and beyond, but, but yes, it's set that way, but it's, it's done as a cooperative deal with the parents. Thanks.
Thank you. And Trustee Beasadi? We're finished. Okay, Trustee Barone?
Yeah, thank you very, thank you very much again, Ms. Acting President, I guess I should say. Also, I just wanted to point out that, you know, the schools are very conscientious. They, they want everyone to be protected, and they're trying to maintain a certain level of respectability as, although, again, I have participated in the graduations. I've never pulled them off. I know I have a couple of principals here to my right who have. And one policy we have is, you know, the kids, for instance, the students, they have to carry their graduation gowns into, into the, into the graduation building, and they're, and they're checked out, because, of course, sometimes you'll have a few people, you know, in every population who will try to get away with things, and I'm not sure if that's really what you want, you know, to preserve the sanctity for everyone in the building, you know? Again, I saw, this, this strikes a very good balance, protecting the sanctity of this event, pretend, allowing for freedom, and, of course, you know, protecting the public as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'll close our discussions, and we have public comment. Ms. Anna Binder?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board, Interim Superintendent Larson Mitchell. We owe a lot of thanks to our students, our administrators, our cabinet, our former Board of Trustees, the ACLU, and everyone who helped introduce that law, get that passed, and put us exactly where we are, where we were for last, the last graduating class, and then now here today. So I want to acknowledge all of the achievement and the work that they put in to make this what it is. And I also have three recent graduates, so it was like different for one, and then the next year it was different. So we do need consistency, because I have another one in two years, so. Something, though, that when the two older ones graduated, and this wasn't in place at the time, but the language in here that students adhere to the required proper attire, worn under the cap and gown as defined by their school, we had to put up a little bit of a fight. As you guys know, my two oldest kids enlisted in the Nevada National Guard when they were juniors in high school. And so although they were still E1s, they had a proper military uniform, and I found out that particular year that in my son's school, there were two other students that had also done the same thing, and we did have to fight for them to wear their uniforms under their cap and gown. So then, when we went out, you know, to celebrate and do pictures, they could take, you know, do both, and like, whatever. But I think that's a huge honor that our district, I know, you know, we appreciate our ROT, Junior ROTC programs, and I know we really appreciate them and their choice to serve our great state while they're still attending high school. And so maybe in the future, we can either add to or have a separate policy that completely also acknowledges that choice and that service, and so most principals aren't going to push back, but again, three years ago, or four years ago, they did. And so I don't know if that's happening, because I don't have one graduating this year, but I could absolutely ask the six recruiters that I know. But it would be nice to have, for them to be recognized, you know, and not have anything, and be recognized in our own policies for that sacrifice they are making. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have David Gomez?
David Gomez for the record, Nevada Peace Alliance President. I wanted to talk about, what is it? This is Section 4, or no, Number 5, Foreign Exchange Students. So it says, "Foreign exchange students who are part of the senior class may be recognized as guests of the school at the graduation ceremony but may not wear a cap and gown or participate in the graduation ceremony." Now, I'm kind of confused on that, because our federal government, and I've been to the Marine Base with my son, who graduated, there were many students there, or many soldiers there, that were from different countries. And they didn't tell them, you can't wear your PTUs or whatever it was that they had. They said, "You can't go on the stage and receive your certificate without that on. You can't do that." So it's kind of weird to see that our government will dress the Marines in these uniforms, whether they're from Mexico, China, Korea, wherever they're from. They would put them in these uniforms and stand them up there and hand them the certificate in their uniform, and then they would participate in the drills on the field in their uniforms. They didn't make them wear their street clothes. They didn't make them wear something different than anyone else. They didn't make them wear anything different. So, and they acknowledged them, because they went through the process. So when I look at something like this, I think that there should be something that allows our foreign exchange students, because if our Marines can do it, that defend our country and are willing to die for us, and those who are from different countries that are willing to put on that uniform and say, "Yes, I will take a bullet for you," we should honor those too as well here, and say, "You know what? You can put a cap and gown, and you can graduate." Because if I went to their country, I'm pretty sure they're not going to tell me that I can't put a, whatever they have on, over there on, and say, "Hey, you know what? You graduated from our top university of Switzerland," or wherever. And they're going to say, "No, you can't walk across the stage. You got to be announced as a guest." We have Mr. Gomez here, who's a guest from Las Vegas, Nevada, who graduated, and we're going to hand him his diploma in the corner over there, but congratulations to all you guys up here. I don't like that part. It just kind of doesn't match with who we are as Americans and who we are as people. So, you know, and I will lecture people as much as I want up here, as long as I want, and I will continue to do it as much as I want. Nobody's not going to tell me nothing until they come start paying that dang bond that I pay, and they take over my children that I pay all the bills for. Don't you ever tell me I'm not to lecture nobody, because if you don't like this job, go do something else. And that's my opinion to whomever, because I really don't care. I really don't. Don't you ever do that to me, because I've been volunteering and doing things for the Black community forever and my own community. So let's get it right.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Rachel Turner?
Hi, thank you, Madam President, Board of Trustees, Interim Superintendent Larson Mitchell, Rachel Turner, parent, community member, for the record. I'm currently fostering two high school students, and they'll be graduating in 2025 and 2026. And I personally remember how much fun high school graduation was. Well, it's this great time celebrating your milestone achievement, which it is. It also was the opportunity that we had to wear decorations or adornments that recognize both academic achievement, participation in clubs and associations, and also some individual expression. And I know our students fought really hard to go ahead and get this type of regulation pushed through, but what I'm concerned about at this time is that the students are only allowed to wear traditional tribal regalia or recognized objects of religious or cultural significance. This seems to me to leave a lot of room for discretionary decision-making by the school principal or their designation person to deny decorations and adornments. So with this in mind, I'm just asking that we consider reviewing that definition that's in there about what a cultural significance would be in Section 2, Part B. It's kind of vague and maybe open to interpretation that could potentially negatively impact marginalized students in our community. We do have our nondiscrimination verbiage in compliance with NRS 388.132, which requires school districts to provide a safe and respectful learning environment in which persons of differing beliefs, races, colors, national origins, ancestries, religions, gender identities, or expressions, sexual orientation, physical or mental disability, sexes, or any distinguishing characteristics or backgrounds, so that they can realize their full academic and personal potential. So what I'd love to see is some nondiscriminatory language potentially in here that makes sure we're not leading up too much discretion to potentially an administrator that doesn't align with that nondiscriminatory language. And that goes both to what clothing they may choose to wear underneath. For example, if a child maybe wants to, a female may want to wear a suit. Is that going to be considered inappropriate clothing underneath the gown, as opposed to a male that might want to wear a skirt? Is that inappropriate clothing under the gown? I think we need to make sure that that nondiscriminatory language is in here, so that that particular piece and the part about cultural pieces are not misinterpreted by our administrative teams. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there any more public comments? Seeing, seeing none, I will close public comment. And may I have a motion to approve? What are we on? 4.4? 4.04?
Thank you, Trustee Henry. I, at this moment, I'd like to motion to approve 4.04 Notice of Intent, Clark County School District Regulation 5129.
Thank you, Trustee Dominguez. Trustee Beasadi?
I will second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second on the floor. Please cast your vote. That motion carries. Thank you so much for your presentations. Next, before I open up item 5.01 for public comment, if anyone hasn't had a chance to fill out their cards, please do so now. May I have Tim Underwood for public comment? On deck, can I please have Ian Fenty? Because we have quite a few. At this podium, please, or this seat. Thank you.
Ready? Tim Underwood for the record. I'm grandfathered to five children in this valley. I've avoided discussing the demise of my adult transgender son, Joshua, with this board. It's painful, and his death a year ago last August still traumatizes me, making emotional balance hard to maintain. After I began opposing K through 12 transgenderism in Clark County, Joshua came out as transgender, shocking me. He briefly lived with me, recovering from toxic polyamorous relationships, but then returned to that group shortly after he took his life. He'd embraced the same false WPATH standards this district has adopted, standard CCSD trustees and administrators accepted and still maintain, ignoring biology and common sense. These standards erode resilience with drugs dulling intellect and increasing suicidality post-procedure. WPATH has left thousands of detransitioners wounded physically and mentally by experimental castration drugs and surgeries. Many regret their decisions, yearning for normalcy they cannot reclaim. This has fueled countless suicide and even homicidal attacks with five reported in the last four years. Moms for Liberty Clark County formed just days before Joshua's death, and it deeply disturbed us. Days later, at our first school board meeting, one of our board members loudly protested a trustee's quip about transgenderism in schools. The board president had her detained and evicted by the CCSD police, and then me, also after I stood up and challenged the trustee's governance violation. No verbal warnings were given despite the legal requirements to do so. We were then banned for 30 days. I wanted to resist arrest that day and deliver my speech about Joshua's death. Thankfully now, Trustee Loretta Beasadi delivered it to the board that day for me, because the people's voice cannot be silenced. I do not want any Clark County parent to endure losing their child. The pain is like black walls of flame. It's unbearable. No mom or dad should feel such nameless pain. When you lose a spouse, you're a widower or a widow. When you lose your parents, you're an orphan. But there's no name for losing your child. There's no term for it. Stop pushing children towards castration. You've gender-groomed 354 students, sexualized seven-year-olds, and exposed kids to pornography. Stop guiding them towards suicide. Set my children free.
Thank you. Now, next up, we have Ian Fenty? Yes?
For the record, my name's Ian Fenty. I know there are going to be others that follow me that are speaking against Regulation 6150 and, and asking for you guys to start looking into the possibility of repealing that. I realize that this, that was put into effect by previous trustees, and there's, there's been some turnover. As one of your constituents, I just want to go on record as saying that anything that is done to block transparency, I guess would be the best way to phrase this, of parents in the community being able to see what books we have in our libraries for our kids, as well as what curriculum is being used on them. I would hope that with some of the turnover and that you guys would realize that that is, there's no, there should, there should be nothing in that that's considered a positive. You know? The community should have the ability at any time to see what our children are being taught and exposed to. It is not your responsibility or the education system's responsibility to completely remove that oversight from the parents. That's our responsibility. That's the community's responsibility. And any actions that are taken to block that, you are facilitating the grooming and pedophilia that's being exploited upon our children, that's running rampant in our society these days. And I would ask you guys to please, please take that into consideration and make whatever moves are necessary to get rid of that. My understanding is we are the only school district in the entire state that has closed off the library system and the public education to parents and to communities, and so that we can't see what's going on in those. And, and like I said, I don't see any need for that. That does, that, that has no positive effect on, on what's going on in the education of our kids, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, may I have Andrea Aguilar?
Andrea Aguilar for the record.
Andrea Aguilar, for the record. In a recent town hall, members of this board call for safe zone resolutions and the need for rapid response teams for each school. The board members seem to use rapid response when it's for their own agendas. It's quite interesting what is considered rapid response to the board. When a mother a few years ago stood up here and read to the board her daughter's assignment where she had to act out what was basically a pornographic scene, the president turned off the mother's mic and wouldn't let her finish. It was too inappropriate for the meeting, but apparently not inappropriate enough for the children. There was no rapid response then. As a matter of fact, your lack of rapid response cost this county a lot of money because the family took this matter to court. When several people, including myself, have read out loud from books that are on the shelves in our school libraries vividly describing acts of incest, blowjobs, and rape, for example, there has been no rapid response. Years have passed with no response from the board, nothing, crickets. Well, since the board loves pornography so much, you should be sharing your porn, no? Please don't be greedy by just sharing it with the children. Let's make it so all parents can read it. Clark County is the only county in all of Nevada that does not have open source libraries. Now, why is that? If you're so proud that you have books on your shelves detailing acts of incest, blowjobs, and rape, why not allow parents to access these wonderful educational resources that you provide their children? Parents have the right to have access to the educational materials that schools are using without having to have secret passwords and receiving permission from committees made up people with their own personal agendas, usually consisting of those who want parents to be ignorant to what is happening in their child's school. Continue to be proud of your educational materials provided to the students and share with everyone. I'm asking that Regulation 6150 be put on your agenda. Again, I say be proud and share your porn. Let's make sure parents have access. There couldn't be any reason you are making it difficult for parents to access it, is I belong on a different planet because I've been watching people come up here and reading from the books that are on the libraries, and nothing, like nothing's happening, there's no discussion. I don't even understand. Like, I'm at a loss for words. This has been going on forever. At least have a discussion about it. I mean, if you like porn, then say it. Be proud. I don't understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Stephanie Kinsley.
Hello, it's Stephanie Kinsley, for the record. I'm going to piggyback off a lot of these other parents and just ask, how have you guys gotten it so wrong so often? It seems intentional. It seems nefarious. It seems evil. It seems there's an intentional attack on our children, the same people who hold political signs during board meetings, who kick ministers and mothers out for reading the graphic pornographic books in the schools. I just have to ask, I mean, someone with a degree in psychology or some sort of counseling could probably give you a better understanding, but what benefit does it have on a child to introduce them to these graphic topics at young ages? It's actually very detrimental. And I don't know if you're trying to convert more children into some weird lifestyle. I don't know if this is intentional. I don't know what you guys get out of it. There must be something going on that we're willing to sell our soul to somebody. I don't know if it's just you've all replaced God with the Democratic Party and you'll do, you'll take Fauci's shot with now people have COVID-induced AIDS from. Jiminy Christmas, and you guys are trying to allow that in kids. The mental deficiency that allowed masking and you would kick people out if they weren't masked enough. Please back up. I sent emails requesting back up your stance. How do you get it this wrong so often? Pushing the DEI narratives based on race, that's basically telling young children of color that there's a monster under their bed that doesn't exist. What sort of evil is in you that you would raise young children up to these adults that are just with the victim mentality? Like, who does that to children? If you guys aren't trying to sexualize them, you're trying to demean them and think they're not worthy because of their skin color? What is going on with you guys? We just got over you guys trying to mask the crap out of them with the completely lack of all science. It was non-science. It was nonsense, and you still participated in it. Back up your stance. And it mostly goes to the people who've been here the longest. How do you get it this wrong on accident? It has to be intentional. It has to be nefarious. Who's, who are you serving? Who bought you? Who bought you? Who did you sell your soul to? Who? The same one that got them? Who? Stop. Just leave our kids alone. You know what you're doing. You know it's evil. You know all of this agenda is evil. You know everyone's against it. No one you went and knocked on doors supports this. It's evil. It's nefarious, and you will pay for what you've done.
Next, we'll have Tanya Attaberry.
Okay. I am ready. First of all, my name is Tanya Attaberry, for the record. In all the Senate and Assembly and school board meetings and town halls, I keep hearing key qualifiers like transparency, access, building relationships, and restoring trust. As the board considers adopting, amending, and repealing policies and regulations, I am requesting that Regulation 6150 be added to the board's agenda in the near future. I have over 400 community members who have signed my petition to repeal Regulation 6150. I did send it through Just Talk prior to the meeting so that all of you would be aware that I would be presenting it today. One of the ways you can address public concern is by removing the barriers of Regulation 6150 that have been adopted by the previous school board. Education professionals should never be the gatekeepers keeping parents, guardians, or the public community out of any decisions being made on the behalf of, on behalf or the content a child is being exposed to, either in the classroom nor in the books that line the library shelves of our public schools. One way to accomplish full transparency, easy access, trust, and rebuilding of relationships is to repeal the even more restrictive access regulation 6150 that was voted on December 2024. The petition I have here and sent to all of you in the current Regulation 6150, students or staff must have a single user or password to access the Follett Destiny system, which is only connected to the individual student actively attending each individual school. We are requesting that CCSD move to an open source county public library school system. Most counties in Nevada use the open source model. CCSD has chosen the most restrictive of single user access, but after many inquiries as to why, there is no reasonable answer to be found. Huacho County has an open source public school library system. I can go to their county desert follet and view what books and materials are available for every school, eliminating the need for a single user access. CCSD must eliminate the need for FOIA's just to see a list of books that are on each of the school's library shelves. CCSD must remove the requirement to fill out a CCF 400 form to request to review or challenge objectional books or materials if it is only reviewed by a closed school-based library media center committee chosen by individual school principals, as this is just another example of conflict of interest. It inhibits easy access, trust, and the rebuilding of relationships as it's a lack of transparency. I will be sending updates to Just Talk to how many more community members I have sent.
Thank you so much. Next, David Gomez.
David Gomez, for the record, Nevada Peace Alliance, try to keep up. I just want to let you know, Jesus was never popular with the people that were politicians or Pharisees, Sadducees, or scribes. If you don't know what those people are, go read the Bible, you'll figure it out. In John 8:44, it says, "You are of your father the devil, and you tell lies just like him." And I'm not talking about all of you, but there is someone up here that is of his father, and his father is the devil. You know, they say, "Train a child in the way he should go," in Proverbs 22:6, and it says, "When he gets old, he will not drive far from it, and when he remembers it, he'll remember the things that which you taught him." I was taught by people to love God, love Jesus Christ the Messiah of Nazareth. And a lot of people think that they can tell me what to do. I'm anointed by Him, not by anybody, not by no position or power, not by anything that anybody can put on me or make me wear to make me important, because I will stand there with the day of judgment. I will look at you, and I'll say, "You, don't you remember me?" I'm also going to remember this. I'm going to remember the days I had to grow up as a child when I did have a mother that was heroin addict, and I have part Hispanic, so I call myself a black skin. I sent some of you guys the pictures up there so that you can actually see my relations to how black I really am, but you can't tell when you look at me. And I used to go inside of my Hispanic's house, and I used to go in my aunt's house and all of them, and I would say 90% of them would call me and call my mother names. And they would call her a fig tree beetle, and a fig tree beetle has a different name. They call it a mayate. That's what they call it in Spanish. They would tell my dad, my biological father at the time, "Why are you married to that mayate?" I heard this in Day and Day Out when I was there, because my mom couldn't take care of me. She was really messed up before she got a little bit better and found somebody that was good. But nevertheless, I grew up in a house with different racial background. And the Hispanic side have called me every black name of an inn all the way up the book, all the way down the book. And I remember it as a kid, and it was very hurtful. And you know what? I'm not going to let nobody talk down to me ever because I had to endure it as a child. And I have, I'm not going to endure it as a man because my children are successful. They give me a headache, they don't give you a headache. They don't give teachers a headache. I believe in the route of correction. I believe in corporal punishment. I believe that if they disrespect somebody, I'm going to show them how to correct their measure. My son thought that sagging was cool. I showed him where sagging ends really fast, and I handed him his belt, and I said, "What are we going to do about it?" So don't you ever disrespect me again.
Thank you. We'll have Yasmina Sabe. Welcome to our school board meeting.
Oh, my God. Hello, my name is Yasmina Sabe, and I'm hoping to give some information that is helpful. I came down here because my son goes to Bob Miller School, and the information I'm going to give includes neuroscience and it'll wrap back around to psychology. So basically, what I am noticing is that the dopamine receptors, there's five dopamine receptors, and four of them, they release the happy chemical in you that's supposed to make you happy. Well, back in 2005, it was a natural, the dopamine receptors were letting off about 25 hits a day just through natural activities. But today, in the digital world, the dopamine receptors are releasing about hundreds to over thousands of hits of dopamine a day. And so that is, that's a huge chemical imbalance. And so I'm seeing the disconnect with my children and the teachers because the kids are really, really smart. And so I feel like as far as with the staff, they're completely overwhelmed, which I do understand is something that you guys are working on. I know that the therapist, the seventh-grade therapist, it was, she's responsible for 500 children. And I was like, there's just no way that that's possible, even if you brought in three more therapists. It's like, how does that work when everybody's dopamine receptors are like really, really high? So I just wanted to make a suggestion. I don't really know how you do it because I know that there's so much you guys can do. When it comes to something that's scientific and chemical, that has to come from up top, and they tell you guys, I don't know if you guys can rewrite it all by yourself. So from my, I know from my understanding, what is being instilled is a lot of scientific thing, and I don't feel like science is talked about enough. We're just busy talking about money. The science is overall what runs the world because the chemicals in our body, they operate in a way where your dopamine receptors go off to certain things that make you happy. So it puts your mind in autopilot. So basically, the human brain is probably functioning consciously about, what, 15% of the time because it's on autopilot. So that's why you're getting a lot of reactions of like anger. It's a fight-flight-fond or freeze. You guys are up here freezing, and it's very appreciated because what can you really do? But a lot of the fight is coming out at school. And so with my son, I was trying to talk with the staff, and they were just like, "It goes to Clark County School District, so this all makes sense." So I wanted to come up here and just voice that. The only thing I could suggest is the fact that these kids are operating and they're so functioning, maybe self-soothing. They're going to need some self-soothing things because there's just no way that all the adults can keep up with all the children. I thought of like cold ice packs, but I don't know. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. Anna Binder. I can come back to you. You want me to come back to you?
Can you speak into the mic, please? Sorry. All right. Hi. Good evening, everyone. I am, I'm coming to you. My name is Desiree Ellison. I am a Nevada resident. I'm just coming to you with, to express my concern, beliefs, well, not concern. Anyway, I'm coming to you with concerns about the communication abilities in ASL of our Nevada children and the ability to be able to communicate with the deaf community. Although I realize that there are not a great percentage of deaf in Nevada. However, aside from it being disheartening, I feel that we are doing our children a great disadvantage at not letting them allow, I'm sorry, not allowing them to learn to sign in the early years of education. By enabling our children to, the ability to effectively communicate with one another in sign along with their deaf peers would allow the deaf the opportunity to participate in the educational process in the early years. Just, I also just wanted to add that I know that there are great statistics, and it's widespread that, I'm sorry, the statistics show that there is not widespread recognition of ASL as a natural language, but it's been being used throughout America and France since the 1800s. And while I have your attention, I didn't quote my facts, but to my knowledge, it has been since the 1800s that the sitting president still has to sign a deaf pupil's diploma in order for them to graduate from university. Thank you. Yeah, and that's ridiculous. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we'll have Anna Binder.
Thank you. Madam President, members of the board, interim Superintendent Larson Mitchell. So since I know you guys can't engage during public comment, and for those listening, Policy 6150 was actually adopted originally on February 2, 1965. 6150 was actually adopted originally on February 2nd, 1965. It is, our policy has to follow state and federal law. It is an NRS under Chapter 389 and codified in NAC, also under Chapter 389. This board has revised this policy in 1981, 1990, 1994, 1995, 2001, 2007, ooh, looks like 2018, sorry, eh, 2021. And guess what? You just revised it on 12/12/24. So when you hear people in the community with their petition, and I know that they have been attempted to be educated in the past, that this policy follows state law. So the petition needs to be submitted to your lawmaker. This board cannot unilaterally change a district policy that has to follow law. Thank you. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you. Can we please refrain from bantering the audience? Thank you.
Abraham Camayo for the record, members of the board, superintendent Brenda Larson. Thank you so much for everything you guys do. I know it's, it's hard to sit up there with, with, with public comment. I do appreciate the, this time to speak and to allow me to be engaging as a parent. But before we end the night, I come as a parent and as a father of my five beautiful daughters and one boy, as a student from the school district. Today, we had a, another incident in our school. And I, I try not to be the guy with bad news, but it just happens to be that I'm a safety guy professionally, I'm a risk manager. But today, we had an incident with another gun in our school, at Tom Williams Elementary. And though our school police did a great job confiscating this handgun and removing it from the campus, I speak as an alumni or alumna from Tom Williams. I attended this school. Well, this hits home. I was crucial in pushing the idea of the push buttons that the teachers are wearing nowadays. I was very critical about that. I brought up over and over and over the idea of bringing metal detectors to all our schools, not just in use in our building with six dedicated police officers sitting outside serving and protecting us, but in our schools, our elementary schools, we share the police officers within the elementary, middle school, and the high school. Lord forbid that we have an incident in our community. Now, I'm not advocating the whole gun and all these things. I am for preventative, trying to figure out a solution. As of right now, on the school district's website, there has been 24 handguns on campus. School year's not over yet. As of today, there's gonna be now 18 handguns on property, seven, seven of them off property. Thirteen by a juvenile, 12 by an adult, and students are 12. It's coming. I'm a safety risk manager professionally. I write emergency procedures, and I train with our Nevada CERT Emergency Response Team with, with Las Vegas Fire Department and rescues, and I'm part of the Task Force One when we do responses. We need to have and engage this conversation where we have metal detectors in all our schools, our elementaries. This is where a single point of entry kicks in. We need to continue these talks. We need to continue to provide these tools to prevent something to happen in our, thank you, good night.
Thank you. Ed Gonzalez.
Thank you, Chair Henry, members of the board, Dr. Brenda Larson Mitchell. For the record, my name is Ed Gonzalez. I am the community member at the Hickey Elementary School Organizational Team. And today, I come here to speak on something more positive than what I said earlier. Monday is Nevada Reading Week. And the excitement I have from this, to me, it's like Christmas wrapped into my birthday, which I really don't celebrate much in general, but every holiday you can think of, because it's one opportunity, it's sort of opened up for community members and parents really come into the classroom and to read. And Dr. Brenda Larson Mitchell, last year, I think I had an appointment with you during that, and the excitement on my face was just like coming across town, meeting with her, and all I'm doing is showing photos of Reading Week, showing videos. I mean, sure, we're gonna talk about stuff, but it was probably about 10 minutes of doing that. But what I like about this is because for the last three years I've done at Hickey, most of the time it's librarians. But part of it is because there's many schools who don't have many readers. And my principal tolerates me on a lot of stuff. What she tolerated me on is being on the organizational team is the fact they said, "We can get readers here." And so this year, I'm happy that I tried to keep it small. It didn't work out. There's at least three people in this room who are coming to Reading Week. I usually don't invite district personnel, not because we don't appreciate the people in the district, it's because we want to get people who are outside to come into the school. And so when we first did this, we have about 45 or 50 people. We've had as much as 60, but there's some people who would normally read who are up at the legislature. We've had our elected officials there. There are some people who advocate for other issues up there, so it's always tough. But the first time we did this, if you guys know who Dr. Everwhite is, a former CFO, I was getting advice like, "How many readers do you need?" And she told me something that I took seriously that I did not realize was a joke. She told me, "You need one reader per class per day." I did the math, I was trying to find 150 to 175 readers. I did not realize that that's not what you do. But what it is, is the teachers really appreciate it, but it's the kids, the kids who can walk in and hear people who are different, you know, backgrounds, different varieties, to say, "Here's what's going on in our school, see what's in the classroom, see what the accomplishments are and the challenges," and better yet, using that to get them to come for Career Week, to sit there and see more stuff like it. So it's a great time. I hope all of you guys are going to one school in your districts, in your areas. I could see Councilman Barone is probably going to somewhere in North Las Vegas. I know that five trustee, trustee Cavassos, and I know some like trustees Satori, you deal with that challenge at your school as well, and there's the excitement of that. And so what I like about it is that this year, I had most of the people with conflict. So I had like 55, 60 people last year, about 12 of them are coming back. So I had to find a whole new group of people. And to me, if I see you in like August and September, and I haven't seen you in a while, the first question I ask you is, "What are you doing for Reading Week?" And so I hope you guys go to the school, take pictures, share them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Rachel Turner.
Thank you, Madam President, trustees, interim superintendent Larson Mitchell, Rachel Turner, parent and community member for the record. I'm not sure if you're aware, but today, a website was opened by the Department of Education requesting confidential submissions from the public to report, quote, "illegal discriminatory practices at institutions of learning." This allows the public to submit pictures, media, and complaints on schools and school districts. The Department of Education says they're gonna use this information to identify potential areas for investigation. This is to, quote unquote, "increase the accountability of federal education programs to the president, the Congress, and the public," and specifically, quote, "free of this, to make the education free of divisive ideologies and indoctrin, indoctrin," I can't even say that word, you know what I'm saying, indoctrination? There we go. Want to know the name of this website? N D E I dot E D dot gov. This is opening up our students, our educators, and even yourselves, as a board and a superintendent, to investigations and potentially targeting by the federal government and the Department of Education. If this doesn't terrify you and your family, you aren't paying attention to what is happening to our marginalized communities across this country via our federal government. As a mother and foster parent of several CCSD students, I ask you that you consider enacting protections against these witch hunts that put everyone, all of you, at risk. This does not provide a safe learning environment for any of our students. And to follow up on that, I just want to give you guys some statistics that are important to remember. Many of our LGBTQ plus young people lack access to affirming spaces, with only 38% of youth reporting that their home is affirming, and just over half saying that their school is affirming. Just over 1 in 3 transgender and non-binary youth found their home to be gender-affirming, and 52% found their school to be affirming. The Trevor Project's research consistently finds that young people report lower rates of attempting suicide when they have access to LGBTQ-affirming spaces. In fact, another study found that LGBT young adults who report high levels of parental rejection, that is, you come out to your father and they say that you're still their son when they actually identify as their daughter, those kids are eight times more likely to report attempting suicide. Although I feel for a fellow, fellow parent when they lose their child, maybe they need to reflect more on how they treated that child in that needing moment and stop accusing our schools of doing anything other than supporting and affirming the children that actually decreases their risks. Thank you.
Thank you. That was our last public comment. Thank you so much. So our upcoming meeting is Monday. The next meeting of the Board of Trustees is on March 3rd, 2025, at 4:00 PM in the boardroom. I'm sorry, just, my apologies. My apologies. I take that back. What I do want to say is I thank you all for your grace and patience as I had the ability to chair the meeting tonight. I'm thankful for my colleagues for their support as well, and I truly do appreciate you all. As we wrap up Black History Month and we're going into Nevada Reading Week, I encourage you all to read to our students, please, and thank you. Sometimes, sometimes trustees will miss meetings. We are elected officials and appointed, but we are also human, and life happens. And so we do have to live in the art of pivot. So again, I thank you all for your support and grace. As I chaired this meeting, it's important that we continue the business of the district. There's 11 members here. We can support each other. We are a team, and we can do this. So thank you to our staff members. Thank you to all that have attended. May I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I would like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, trustee Asparsa Straffigan. And may I have a second?
I would like to second that motion to adjourn.
Thank you so much. Please cast your vote. This meeting is adjourned. Motion passes.